Welcome, everyone, to the Town of Poughkeepsie Planning Board Meeting for May. It is May 19th today of 2022. Please start by joining me for the pledge. Thanks, everyone. First up, we have, just for people listening online, we do have a quorum of six board vendors today. So, start off with the first application from Central Hudson Transmission Line, KM. Come on up, guys. All right, you've been here before on this transmission line. What's the latest?
Good evening. My name's Anthony Miranda from Cuddy and Fader here for Central Hudson. And joined with me is two people that you know well, Brian Demisco from Central Hudson and Greg Woodman from EDR. So, just an update on where this project is and what we've been doing. And then we'll have a, given that this is a public hearing, we'll have a brief presentation for the benefit of those watching. So, procedurally, for this public hearing, all notices were completed and packaged submitted to the town addressing the requirements of the code. We've also provided written responses to prior comments that we got from this board and from the consultants for the town, and addressed those in February, and then we submitted it recently. This is the application for site plan approval for the replacement of an existing transmission line known as the KM line. And Brian will show you exactly where that is and identify the poles that will be replaced. It's a relatively straightforward project in that it's a pole-for-pole replacement, one-for-one. There are 20 poles in the Town of Poughkeepsie. The right-of-way extends approximately 2.8 miles, mostly in the Town of Wapanger, but of course about a mile, mile point one in the Town of Poughkeepsie. The, with respect to Wapanger, as you know, the planning board for the Town of Wapanger served as the seeker lead agency. We went through that process for a few months. They incorporated the comments from your consultants and this board with respect to seeker considerations. They adopted a negative declaration, closing out the seeker process in the beginning of April. The Wapanger Planning Board also proceeded to complete their own review process by granting site plan approval. I think it was April 18th. So, we're back here with the Town of Poughkeepsie to review the portion of the project that is in the Town of Poughkeepsie.
All right. Thanks, Anthony.
Sure.
Anything else?
Brian was gonna, just again, for the benefit, knowing that this is a public hearing, we were gonna walk through a few slides just for the benefit of the public.
Thank you, Anthony. And again, Brian Demisco, Central Hudson Gas and Electric Project Manager. It's good to be back in front of the planning board again. As Anthony said, this is the KM line. It's an electric transmission line, 69 KB, and this is a line replacement project. So, I'll go through some slides for you. I know you're familiar with our site plan application submission. And I'll just highlight some things that are good to know. As a reminder, the project location and description, the total line length traverse is 2.8 miles, approximately 2.8 miles. The majority of it, 1.7 miles within the Town of Wapanger, the remaining 1.1 mile within the Town of Poughkeepsie. And you can see just by a point of delineation here, the town line demarcation between Wapanger and Poughkeepsie, right here through the Wapanger Creek. And so, this section here that you see in red would represent the traverse of about 1.7 miles. I'm sorry, 1.1 miles, thank you. The history and existing conditions of the KM line. It's wood pole construction, not uncommon to many of our, several of our other older transmission lines that are also going through a replacement project of this kind. This old construction, this line layout is decades old, nearly 100 years old in its original form. So, field inspections have identified significant amount of long-term degradation of poles and conductor wire. And the overall infrastructure is reaching the end of its useful life. So, it's at a point where we do need to replace it in whole. And along with that, the design of the current KM line is rather old. It's based on old design standards. So, it's important not only to replace the infrastructure, but it's also important to bring it up to current design code and standards. And that's what our engineering department is responsible for with the design. Central Hudson is obligated, as you might expect, to maintain its electric infrastructure. That includes distribution, transmission, and of course, this is a 69 KB line. And so, we need to replace this line. It needs to be completed. But just replacing it, we're actually gonna have some wonderful benefits for the community that this line serves. You know, it's important, of course, to maintain electric reliability. But on top of that, we're all aware that we have seen through the years, in more recent years, we're seeing storms that are more frequent and just tougher on our, on our environment, including our electric system. So, it's really important that we include not just replacement, but think about storm hardening for the benefit of our customers and for the system. So, the new design will meet all current design standards. The wood poles will be replaced by self-weathering brown steel poles. They look very much like the brown wood poles that are there, so they'll blend in very nicely. And I have some photos for you to take a look at, so we can do some comparison of what that looks like. We'll also have, much to the benefit of the project, removal of some other inactive infrastructure that is resident on the KM line. So, when we are replacing this line, we'll have less infrastructure in the air, as they say. So, that'll be next, to not only retire some old infrastructure, but to do the replacement as well. So, that permanent removal of inactive infrastructure allows for streamlined design, as you'll see in some of the photos that I'm gonna share with you in a moment. The KM line will stay in the same right-of-way with generally the same pole locations, very, very close to where the existing ones are. And the transfers will be made as part of the replacement, and will of course stay at 69 KB. Just to give you some data points on the KM line, as Anthony noted, you know, the total line, the KM line, is 49 poles in terms of the project between Town of Wapanger and Town of Poughkeepsie. See what the average pole height is across those 49 poles, existing replacement, an increase of about five feet overall change. And as you might expect, that is as a result of the current design standards and improving for storm hardening and for ground clearance conditions, et cetera. Maximum and minimum pole heights, you can see, are fairly close. A little, maximum pole height currently is 78 feet. The tallest pole will increase to about 81 and a half feet. Minimum pole height currently is 33 and a half feet, and it will go up to about 36 and a half feet. So, about three feet. Within Town of Poughkeepsie, which you're probably more interested in, 20 of those 49 poles will be replaced. The average height that we have today is about 53 feet. The replacement average height will be about 57 and a half feet, an increase overall about four and a half feet in the Town of Poughkeepsie. The existing max pole height, 70 foot, will actually come down a little bit to 68 feet. And so, that'll come down by a couple of feet. And minimum pole height will increase slightly by about a foot and a half, from 39 and a half to 41. So, some sampling, sample pictures of the existing KM line, just to show you some of the pole degradation that we're dealing with. Wood poles, our transmission line wood poles are unfortunately subject to degradation as a result of Mother Nature and wildlife. Mother Nature is, you might think of UV, right, the sun, and we get hit with weather of all four seasons, and it provides it unfortunately wear and tear. We also have woodpeckers that do quite a bit of damage, extensive damage, to our transmission line, our wood poles. And as you can see, the rot, the wear and tear, woodpecker holes takes quite, makes quite an impact. And as you understand, it's really important to not only replace, but to make it better. Another picture, just closing in some zoom shots. This is an interesting photo, this is a great photo, actually. This is in the Town of Poughkeepsie. This is located behind the Stanley Steel Ballpark area. And this is looking west in the right-of-way. And so, as you can see that on the left, you see a dual pole configuration there, and then upstream from there, or downstream from there, the other two poles. Different configuration, but there is retired infrastructure on this line that will be removed. So, what you're looking at on the left is currently the KM with retired infrastructure. The middle is the model of our steel pole replacement with just three conductor wires that will be stationed as part of the replacement. So, it will clean up very nicely and be an improvement for the, for the system itself.
Just a quick, quick question.
Yes.
As far as guy wires go, do the steel poles move more or less, or how's that?
You're not gonna, you're only gonna see a guy wire where we have maybe an angle change. So, wherever you have straight line, such as in here, you won't be seeing any guy wires. And the image on the right just happens to be an aerial photo. And that actually happens to be taken from our TV line, another replacement project that's happening, actually just completed in the Town of Wapanger, very similar to the KM line. So, you get a sense of what, what things will look like. This shot on the left, that actually happens to be in the vicinity of Rally Road and over by Vassal Road, over in that area. So, you can see how the existing pole, if you're able to kind of look at the top there, I'm not sure how the image is on your screen, but you do have some rock there at the top of the pole, retired infrastructure. You can see how cleanly this will get picked up as part of the replacement project. My last page, my last screen here, our planned schedule. Permit applications, as you know, submissions were made in December of 2021. We worked with the Town of Wapanger Planning Board, as Anthony mentioned. They were the lead agency for seeker review. April was a very productive month for us with the Town of Wapanger. We attended two planning board meetings, the first on April 4th. We provided resolution of seeker negative declaration determination, and we were back just a couple of weeks later on April 18th, the resolution of site plan approval. So, we do have ongoing site plan and permit approvals in place, obviously clearly with the Town of Poughkeepsie. We also have some other permits that we'll have to obtain as well, more of the ministerial type highway work permits, et cetera, and we'll be working on those as well. Our planned project work would take place, at this point, looking into our crystal ball, with permitting taking place and moving forward, sometime, we would like to plan for the fourth quarter of this year into the first quarter of 2023. This is a relatively short traverse in terms of transmission lines, so that's a good thing. But we always plan for, you know, inclement weather and things of that nature. So, we view this as a five-to-six-month period project, followed by a final field restoration that would take place thereafter. And that's the end of my presentation.
Thanks, Brian. Kristin?
Thank you. So, I don't know much else of what I could say. The application is on for a public hearing, so staff has prepared resolution for you for opening the public hearing, closing the public hearing, and adopting a resolution to grant conditional site plan approval. We also thought it would be important for the board to actually consider architectural review, just given the change of the pole. But as you can see, they've provided you with several images for your discussion and review. Of course, that depends on the public comment that you hear. You do have the option to also adjourn and defer action this evening. Most of my comments are pretty straightforward, as are the remaining staff comments. There was, of course, the coordination request with, you know, local fire departments and police once construction was underway. But of course, again, this is something that would all be reviewed as a matter of pre-construction meeting process. So, with that, I would pass it along to...
All right. Thanks, Kristin. Andy?
Sure, yeah. Most of our comments have been addressed. The only outstanding issues are related to erosion settlement controls, which I think we can pretty easily address, you know, in an offline meeting with the applicant, kind of go through that and work those issues out.
And I think there was, I think it was mentioned, there was no wetlands involved in these.
Right.
Town of Poughkeepsie.
Right.
This is on for a public hearing, so I move we open the public hearing for this project.
Second.
Moved to seconded, called to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
opposed, motion passes six to zero. Anyone on the call or in the audience wish to comment on the transmission line project? Do a second, raise your hand on Zoom.
Brian, if you would advise on, or stopping the share.
Thank you. You're on Zoom, you can raise your hand, just unmute yourself.
I think that's all of you.
Those are all applicants, it looks like, right? Yeah. So, I don't think we have anything. Seeing none, I move we close the public hearing.
Second.
Moved to seconded, called to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Closed, motion passes six to zero. Go around the board for comments on this. Peter? Ben?
This will probably become as a shock to the wood that was there.
They may get some headaches if they try.
I gotta be honest, we've done this presentation, and we've talked about this issue with other communities, and that's the funniest joke I've gotten. So, thank you.
Will there be any outages because of the replacement?
No, not for the customers. We have the ability to switch and rotate our transmission lines, take them out of service and alternate, so it would go without any interruption.
Smoothly. Okay. Great.
No comment.
No comment.
Yep, that's it. On this project, I do wanna say, I know you've been working with the town and stuff on the landscape for the substitution we built too, so I appreciate that you're keeping an eye on that. Hopefully, that project continues to go well. So...
I move the planning board grant conditional site plan approval for this Central Hudson KM transmission line replacement, subject to the following. Respond to comments of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies, and said responses to be reviewed by the planning department as adequacy and completeness inclusive of, but not limited to, 1 through 10.
Move to seconded, called to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
opposed, motion passes six to zero. We will conduct architectural review, and you have presented the poles. Anyone have any comments on the architecture of the wooden poles? I like the idea that they turn brown to blend in more with the nature. All right, and we accept architecture as presented?
Second.
Move to the seconded, called to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
opposed, motion passes six to zero. Good to go.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Take your time, thanks for coming in, guys.
Thank you very much.
Look for this project also. Now, about my bills, let's see. Next up is Guardian Self-Storage on Love Road.
Mr. Charlie Frank, Level Project Manager for Guardian Self-Storage.
Hey, Frank.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening. See where we're at here.
Yeah, I'll just share my screen here. Okay, this is also one for a public hearing. I want to give a brief overview for the board and also for the public, if anyone's going to be making any comments. The application before this board is for site plan approval and for a special use permit in order for us to construct a 71,413 square foot climate-controlled self-storage building on Love Road. The address is 20-50 Love Road. Years ago, Herbert purchased these properties through stray separate deeds. In 2005, we consolidated all of those different grid numbers into one tax ID number. The property is approximately four and a half acres. Before Route 44 was redeveloped by, by the New York State DOT, there used to be a gas station on this site, and Level Oil also had facilities on this site. Knowing that, we anticipated that there would be some type of contamination on the property. So, in 2004, we applied to the DEC for acceptance into the brownfield program. We were accepted. And throughout the next several years, we did a lot of testing and remediation, which ultimately resulted in 2017 with a certificate of completion by the DEC. In order to obtain the certificate of completion, we also had to prepare, and we're going to be bound by a site management plan, which will govern any future testing that still has to be done on the property, any controls that have to be put inside the building, and that's all gonna be under the purview of the DEC. We've made application to the DEC by supplying copy of these most recent plans for the DEC's review. We're awaiting a response from them to make sure that this plan will comply with the site management plan. The property is serviced with electric, gas, municipal water, and sewer. We intend to hook up to all of those facilities. The plan that we provide, it does provide for some stormwater management, some sewer hookups, water hookups. We're working through a lot of the comments that the town has applied thus far. We've made some headway, but I know that we still have some issues that we wanna work through with Andy Lern and the fire department and zoning. This site plan, we also, it's not code compliant, we're going to have to apply to the ZBA for some variances. It is our hope tonight that the board feels that there's enough here that a negative declaration can be issued, which would open the door for us to at least start the application process with the ZBA. We've had comments from Carol on, on the Habitat and also the existing pond on the property. She's made some recent comments that we think are quite valid, and we intend to make some revisions to comply with Carol's thoughts. We've got some outstanding things with Andy Lern. This, believe it or not, Love Road is a state road that is maintained by the town, in our opinion. Years ago, we, over here, we gave the county an easement for people to access the Duchess County Rail Trail. At that time, years ago, the county did paint parking lines along Love Road, but they disappeared over time. I think, I think Kristin was going to reach out to the county to see if it could be rewired. We've provided for a large snow storage area here and over here. Unfortunately, we really can't do any snow storage here because of the topography. It's, as soon as Love Road ends at this cul-de-sac, it's really quite steep going uphill to Route 44. We've provided a lighting plan that, for the most part, all the lighting will comply with the town code, with the exception that there will be some lighting spilled over into the cul-de-sac at this area. Actually, we think that may be beneficial because it will provide security and also lighting for this cul-de-sac area, hopefully to discourage people from parking up there or getting into any shenanigans up there. There are no neighbors over to decide that the lights would bother. Lighting would not be spilling onto Route 44. We did propose some pole, a pole light here, as shown on our plans. The 20-foot pole, which is just a downlight, won't have any glare going onto Route 44. We did present some signage that we'd like on the property, one of which is gonna require a variance from the ZBA. That's it for my presentation. I'd be happy to field any questions that the board may have, or if anyone's present from, from the public, I'll be able to respond.
All right. Thank you, Frank.
Thank you.
Kristin?
Thank you, Frank, for the overview. It was helpful to run through some of those items. So, again, just for the board's education, the application's on for a public hearing this evening. Seeker review for a type one action, special use permit review, site plan review, flood development permit review, and architectural review. So, this evening, the board would be looking, or staff would be asking the board to consider a seeker determination after they would hear public comment. I would recommend that the board adjourn the public hearing. If seeker is adopted, the applicant can commence that process at the ZBA and make their case for all of the area variances that are required. Assuming they get all of that worked out, they would come back to the planning board. And at that point, if there were additional site plan comments, they would be making a resubmission to respond to these comments that we provided. And there would be another opportunity to talk through any of those outstanding items. Just a couple of points. The lighting, you know, ultimately, I'm as, I mean, I'm not overly concerned about it. There would be a requirement to seek an area variance for this spillage. I also would like to point out, too, that it is part of this, one of two items as it relates to the special use permit requirement. So, just to take that into consideration. But again, I had a conversation with the zoning administrator, and it didn't seem to be something that, you know, would necessarily stop the project from moving forward. I'd also like to point out, too, that ultimately, it is enforceable by the town zoning administrator. If there were issues with lighting once the building and everything was in place, we would be able to go out and say, hey, you need to fix this and correct it. So, you know, that, I just will point that out for your consideration. But ultimately, just looking to clean up the plans a little bit more. Again, the snow storage was touched on. I did speak with the highway department. They are responsible for the snow clearing on that, on Love Road currently. And I do think that Frank has mentioned previously that if it were necessary, that snow storage or additional or surplus of snow could be removed from the site. Perhaps we could include a note on the site plan to that effect. And then, also just, I did also speak to Duchess County DPW, and they are on their own schedule in terms of going out and, you know, confirming if an area needs to be restriped in terms of parking for rail trail access. So, we're not gonna, you know, hold up a project review because of that, but I do think at some point down the line, if, once the project is built, perhaps that's something I could revisit with the county at a later date. Ultimately, I think they wanna make sure there's parking for their patrons as well, right? So...
Yeah, I mean, they'll have their parking lot set up as, as on the plans with the rail trail. People park there with the drivers for that big, reliable, and help organize it better.
Right. So, again, just some minor comments really left. And then, of course, they, they really do need to, you know, head to the ZBA in terms of making their case for some of the other items that could potentially implicate the site plan. So, at this point, staff would recommend moving forward if the board felt comfortable to do so.
All right. Thanks. Let me go to Carol first next. Carol, you have comments on your, on your order?
She's muted.
Frank, would you mind just stopping the share on your screen?
Oh, yes. Sorry about that.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm here.
Hi, Carol.
Hello. Basically, yes, we've, we've spoken, I spoke with Frank and the engineer, and they're still working on a few things. There was a bat note discrepancy on the plans. There are still some issues with existing, the proposed planting as it pertains to weather protection, erosion, and screening that they're, they're looking into. And then, really, we just need to follow up on the disposition of the monitoring wells and the sign-off by NICE Deck. We're, you know, everything else is looking good, and we're just, we're still working through this.
Yeah. Incidentally, Carol, one of the recent conversations our environmental engineer had with the DEC is that since the readings have been reduced drastically over time, there is a possibility that with this approval, the DEC will obviate the need for the monitoring wells. It's, we're waiting for a final determination, but it looks like that may happen.
Okay. That's wonderful. Then they just have to be, you know, properly abandoned, not just, you know, not just cut off and covered up. And that's a whole procedure, so, and I'm sure that's going to be taken care of properly.
Yeah. Chasing them, doing all the work, and we'll make sure that they, they answer everything.
Okay.
Good. That sounds, that sounds great. All right. Thanks, Carol. Andy?
Yes. So, as Frank mentioned, I've have, we still have a few comments to be addressed. My biggest issue, my issue, my biggest concern is really snow storage at the end of the cul-de-sac. You know, as you know, when snowplows push snow, they push it to the right, you know, and when they clear snow on that cul-de-sac, they're gonna be pushing snow right into those parking spaces. So, I just wanna have some further conversations with the highway superintendent to make sure that he's comfortable with his plan, and if there's any other easements that need to be provided, we need to make sure they're on the plan.
We would have tried to rectify that this week, but he's actually out of the office.
Right. Right. So, we can follow up with him on that after. Right. Right. So we can follow up with him on that after, you know, after the fact. You know, I have a couple of other comments on sewer. You know, want to kind of clear that up and make sure those connections are viable and ready to use to serve the project. Those are pretty much the final, our comments. You know, the SWIP is in pretty good shape. I do want to ask Frank, the pole light, the sight light that you pointed out along the 44 is a 20-foot pole. I wonder how that relates to the elevation of 44? If that will be at eye level as you're driving past the site?
I had a conversation with Rich Tompkins at Maury this morning about that. I was concerned about that as well, and we can take some shots to see what the elevation is. First comes a shove, we can perhaps reduce that pole down to 15 feet if there's a problem. We will look at that. We can give you some measurements on that, and if need be, we can reduce the height of that pole light.
Okay. Or some shields, too. You know, something to that effect may help, too.
It's important to have no glare into the drivers coming down 44.
That's it.
Thanks, Andy. This is on for a public hearing, so I move reopen the public hearing.
Second.
Moved in second. It's called question. All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes six to zero. Anyone wish to comment on the Love Road storage application? See anyone in the room here?
I wanted to scroll through online. Everyone online appears to be related to a project application, so.
See, when do you think you'll be coming back again, Frank? June, or June's probably too early, right? Because you have to go to the ZBA.
Will you be on the, I don't know, did you already submit for the ZBA, Frank, or?
No, I didn't make an application yet. I was waiting for the NICE Deck.
Okay, right, right, right. So, okay, so you won't be on until July anyway.
Correct.
July planning board. Yeah, we'll do that way then. And I move we adjourn the public hearing to July 21st, 2022.
Second.
Moved consecutive. Called to question. All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes six to zero. Let's go around the board for comments. Start with Joe.
One of the issues, I think, at the last meeting was the configuration of the parking backing up into the cul-de-sac. Is that something that's going to be continued to be investigated with this DOT and to get their approval?
Yes. As a matter of fact, we have a meeting scheduled with the DOT next Tuesday, a meeting with them and our engineers, and we're going to address that issue and some others that have affect with the DOT. So we're going to see what they have to say, what they recommend.
Okay. Thank you. That was it.
And for what it's worth, the highway superintendent doesn't seem to have a problem with it. I actually did ask him for a flight, so.
Okay, great. Thanks.
On a very busy day, there's probably 10 cars that go up this road.
Yeah, and the storage won't be a big traffic generator. All right, Steve?
Frank, on that same subject, do you have any history of a facility this size on how many spaces are normally required?
We have a similar facility in the town of Bewindsor, and that facility has 15 parking spaces. And we've always tried to monitor things like that, and at best, we may have three or four cars at a time.
Thank you.
That's good. That pertains to the parking variance.
I had a question for you. I saw a note from both the fire department as well as the building department stating that the fire hydrant should be at least 600 feet from the building. And there was a note stating that there was possibly, it was possibly further than 600 feet. Do you, can you elaborate on that?
I thought it had to be within 600 feet. That was my interpretation of it. I can share my screen once again. There is an existing fire hydrant right here now. Our intent is to put another one on the other side of the building, and we got some comments from the fire department about where they'd like it placed.
Okay. And the one that's already there, that's 600 feet or less?
Yeah, it's right across the, it's right across the cul-de-sac. It's probably 150, 200 feet.
Okay. All right. Okay. Thank you. That's the only question.
All right. Thanks. Ben?
My normal question with these things, how many units are in this?
Pardon me?
How many storage units?
How many storage units?
Yeah, that's true.
That, I don't know if that's been finalized yet, sir. I can get an estimate for you and let the board know next time I'm here. With the next, I can supply that with the next submission.
Okay. Appreciate that. And that sidewalk to the rail trail that's existing, I guess the county takes care of that? Are you guys going to have to do anything with that?
Yeah, actually, the people are not going to be leaving our facility to walk over to the rail trail. They're parking along the northerly side of Love Road to access the easement that we gave the county. And that access easement is blacktop now. So really, what people do is they park along the road, follow the road up to the blacktop entrance to the rail trail. That's what people are doing now. We really didn't see the need for a sidewalk there.
Who takes care of that?
The county takes care of the easement area. And the town plows the road.
All right. Thank you. Peter?
We discussed the last time you were here about the building elevation facing Route 44. Had any discussions with the DOT with regard to the condition of the fence in the front of the building?
Now, that's one of the topics we're going to be talking next Tuesday when we meet with the DOT, Mr. Lern.
Okay. There, your landscape plan, you're offering hydrangea and boxwood.
Yes.
Can you provide something that, in the front of the building, and I say front, I mean facing Route 44, that would, something substantial that would kind of soften the appearance of the building?
Where the road is, where the sidewalk on the road is? I mean, if we put landscaping on the ground on that side of the building, you won't see it from the road because it's down so far. It's like in a hole from the road.
Do you have any idea what the difference in elevation is between, you know, the ground level of the building and the elevation of the sidewalk?
No, I have to get that for a comment that Andy Lern had.
All right. When you get it, when you get it the next time, share it with us.
Sure.
Maybe we can come up with some ideas about something that he could do there.
Well, do.
Are you thinking of something that grows a little taller?
Yes. 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 My other comment is, I want, for the record, the town attorney to share with us if we're going to vote on a negative declaration, the relationship between the existence of the site management plan and the need for a DEC comment letter.
So first of all, technically, I'm planning board attorney, not town attorney.
Planning board attorney.
Just, I don't want to step on anyone's toes. And second, so I was thinking about that, but because there is this, the management plan in place, as far as this board is concerned, I think you should be comfortable going ahead with a negative declaration. The plan will incorporate probably more protections than the town would if it were to put in place, and it's in existence already.
So we have an approved NICE Deck site management plan?
Correct.
Yes. That was as part of the Brown's Field Certificate of Completion.
Correct.
That sounds like you've indicated that the DEC maybe won't be there.
Yeah. Incidentally, one of Andy's comments were that there should be a stormwater maintenance and access agreement. Lisa and I have already been in touch with one another, and we're going to be working on a draft of that.
All right. Thanks, Frank. My comments, I guess, I think we've covered it. We don't want to glare on Route 44. I mean, what was your plan for all the vegetation? I heard you might be trying to clear everything out of there or you believe some greenery going up along Love Road?
We wanted to do something, as you drive up the road, and I went up there today as a matter of fact. When you go up Love Road, it's really pretty rowdy looking. Kelly, Mary, takes the appearances of her self-storage facilities quite personally, and she feels as though it's a reflection on her. So we're going to have to make that a little nicer looking driving up Love Road. There's some trees that should be taken down. There's high grass. There's some old rusting cheleng fence that have to be taken down. We haven't really thought it through exactly what we wanted to plant along there, but we want to do something. We can present a better landscaping plan with our next submission.
Okay. Because right now, the landscape plan only shows the front of the building, so that's.
Yes, it does. It does.
Wondering, maybe some trees spaced out or other things. Come up with something.
Great legitimate question. It's, we just haven't formalized it, but I'll submit something with the next submission.
Yeah, I agree. It's kind of a mess of things now there.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it was clear at one point when they took down the tank, the big old Love Road tank, but it's, in recent years, it's just overgrown with a lot of stuff. All right, I guess that was the extent of my comments. Oh, and just want to say, it'll be great to see this project move forward because that will help illuminate all the dumping it. It helps to go up the tappes up there.
I know.
Another mattress up there now, the last I saw. All right.
I move the planning board determine that the proposed Guardian self-storage Love Road application would not have a significant adverse impact on the environment for these reasons set forth in the Seeker Negative Declaration for Type 1 Action dated May 19, 2022.
Second.
Moved in seconded for Seeker. Called to question. All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes six to zero.
I move the planning board defer further action on this application and direct the applicant to respond to comments and writing of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies included but now limited to the following 1 through 14.
Second.
Moved in seconded. Called to question. All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes six to zero. Debut with the ZBA.
Thank you very much, everyone. Have a good evening.
You too. Thanks.
Okay, next up is Juliette Cafe and Billiards.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is John Sullivan. Myself and Mike Lockwood of Lockwood Architecture are working with the applicant. This is Sophia Galaska. She is the owner and operator of the Juliette Cafe and Billiards located at 5 Raymond Avenue currently. I believe Mike Lockwood is on Zoom and was going to share his screen.
He did. We see it on our monitors.
So this, the proposed application is to be relocated at 825 Main Street. This is the former Capola's, long time, probably, I don't even know, 35 years. Sometime around 2013 or 14, it was, became, I believe, a Mexican restaurant. And then I think somewhere around 2019, they closed, about a year before the pandemic. So the new location just seems like a better fit. It's, the building's a little bit bigger, the site conditions are better. The lease, the lease agreement seems to be a little bit more fitting, so that's the reason for the new location and why we're before you this evening. The building, like I said, is about 4,000 square feet. The existing Juliette Cafe is about 1,000 square feet less. So it just seems like a better situation. We are proposing on the rear of the building, which faces north, and the parking lot, a new outdoor patio. We, the site plan that was submitted three weeks ago shows a sort of curved site plan, but after just reading through some of the town comments, as well as myself and Michael meeting with the applicant, it makes sense to, we're going to square it off. And we also are not going to do the pergola that's on the drawings that we're submitting. We, I did review the comments that were posted online last Friday, some of them from various departments, so we'll address those. I believe the deadline for next month is Monday, so we will not hit that. So we would be back in July. We're also aware that there was a error in the address with the public hearing. This is 825 Main Street, but in fact, it's posted, or neighbors were sent a document saying 825 Market Street, and the journal was posted the same, so. That's pretty much it. I don't know if Mike has anything he wants to add.
No, just like to see, ask the board if any comments they may have. We can answer any of their questions at this point.
All right. Thanks. Start with the department's regulations.
Sure. This is a type 2 action for Seeker, which means there's no further environmental review per state regulations. Proposal site plan primarily for the outdoor dining, but also occupancy of the vacant restaurant building. You have comments from a variety of departments having to do with the outdoor restaurant dining standards, circulation, marking, posting. The police mentioned, did provide some comment or some concerns with security that may be addressed by lighting and some management notes on the plan. If the applicant can address those. And if they have any questions, they can, you know, contact us to follow up for revised schedule. We're recommending deferral at the port of the public hearing and defer action for now. And the public hearing notice was, corrected notice was sent out to you, joining neighbors, but it will be renoticed again for the next time.
All right. Andy?
Yeah, I mean, I think our comments are fairly straightforward. Eric mentioned, you know, we're looking for circulation, pavement markings, just to be, you know, a little clearer in the path of circulation through the parking lot, pedestrian protections. And also, if there's anything that can be done with the layout to help with circulation of fire, fire access, for fire access and refuse removal. Remove the pergola, I think, helps. You know, we were suggesting some traffic protection for that, but removing it altogether, that's another way to handle it. We are looking for existing sewer and water service connections to be located. You should be able to coordinate with the sewer and water departments to help you locate those and get them located and place them on plan. That pretty much sums it up for what I was looking for.
All right. Thanks, Andy.
So let's go around before we open the hearing. Maybe the secret.
Okay. I move the planning board make a preliminary determination that the proposal meets the criteria for Seeker Type 2 action pursuant to Seeker Part 617.5 C9, requiring no further environmental review.
Moved in seconded for Seeker. Called to question. All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes six to zero. And it is on for a public hearing, so I move reopen the public hearing.
Second.
Moved in seconded. Called to question. All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes six to zero. Anyone on the Zoom call wish to comment on this project? Person in the back in the room or in the room?
Keep asking. Okay. Michael, if you wouldn't mind stopping the share, just so we can take a quick.
Absolutely. Sure.
Thank you. If anyone's. Still the same crew. I don't see any hands. It's all applicants.
With that case, I move we adjourn the public hearing to July 21st, 2022.
Second.
Moved consecutive. Called to question. All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes six to zero. Go around the board for comments. Ben, anything?
So here, dining facility area, the outdoor shall be defined by landscape. A man-made structure, what are your plans for that?
So the idea is that we're going to do a stone patio. And as I, right before this meeting, met with the applicant, we discussed doing, can you hear me?
Yep.
Discuss doing like a, maybe like a raised wall, like a stone wall, like a lock-type wall with a cap at like seat height, maybe even a little bit higher. maybe even a little bit higher, that would define the edges of the patio. And, um, it also, in terms of, uh, which goes for a liquor license, it has to be enclosed because otherwise people with an alcoholic drink can drift off, so it's, it has to be sort of defined by, um, whether it's a fence or stone or something along those means, so. We'll, we'll, we'll get to those details the next time we submit, we'll, we'll definitely have more information.
Okay. All right. Yeah, I can see how how that would also help, you know, you don't want cars accidentally driving out the patio too, or something like that.
Yeah, based on the way the site is laid out, um, for this type of use, it requires, I believe, forty parking spots. It's one, it's ten spots per thousand square feet, so the existing parking lot was about forty-eight. So reducing the parking actually helps with traffic flow. Um, in terms of, uh, like a garbage truck or, um, a fire truck, we'll have to do some pat, you know, circulation patterns. The fire department didn't comment on the fire truck itself, there is a fire hazard directly in front of this building, right on Main Street. But, you know, the, in terms of a garbage truck, that'll be after hours, so we would presume parking lot at that time will be empty anyway.
All right, thanks, Peter?
You said at the beginning, before, it's gonna be gravel?
No gravel, no, it's the existing parking lot, we're, it's, it's, uh.
No, not the parking lot.
No, the patio surface will be like a a stone, like bluestone or.
Something uneven, though, nothing smooth, nothing flat.
I'm sorry, not gravel, like a bluestone surface, like a stone sur, hard surface, yeah.
Okay, all right. That's it.
All right, Peter?
I hope you shoot the table, good luck.
Nicole?
Uh, yeah, um, hours of operation? Operation hours? Yeah. I would planning to during the week, uh, for Sunday to Thursday, four to one AM, four PM. Okay, four PM to one AM. But weekend time planning open and noon of time, and like Friday, Saturday, on, on time, twelve to one. Okay. Okay, and then, um, the, you're moving because, were you renting at the other location and then this one you're buying? Is that what it?
No, it's a lease.
It's a lease. Oh, it's a lease, it's, you're not buying the building, oh, okay, okay, all right, great, that's all I had, thanks, yeah.
I know the facility's been vacant for a while, but the existing lot, uh, block ledge on the back, what kind of shape is that, Oliver?
Uh, in terms of the rock ledge, it's, um, I believe, I mean, there's, you know, the site itself needs to be cleaned up a bit, there's a lot of overgrowth. It's been empty for a while, um, all around the building, the rock ledge, I didn't look at too close, but it's, um, it's fairly, it's fairly steep.
It's seen very stable, uh, looks, you had a, you know, it's very, um, it's slightly inclined back, but it's, it's, um, it's solid rock and it's very stable.
I would just, apologies for jumping in, uh, I just wanted to point out, or at least give you a heads up, that, um, a couple of parcels, uh, over. Um, there is an application, um, setting up for a reconstruction meeting where they will be ripping into the rock in the rear of the property, so you might want to take a little bit of a look at that, just in case it has some.
I'm sorry, which direction?
Eight nineteen, Main Street.
Eight nineteen, Main, okay, thank you.
Yeah, just on the other side of the, just to your, to your west, a little bit. If it's where the old garage was, it collapsed in a snowstorm a few years back.
Okay, yeah, no, yeah, so, gotcha.
Yeah, just in case it has other implications for your site in general, just as it exists today, so.
It's all part of the same rock ledge that.
Yeah.
Right, right, some turbulence.
Yeah.
But it, it's, it was hard rock there, so. All right, um.
I am not, not in the front.
Okay. Uh, let's see. So I guess Andy will be taking a look at that lot, too, against my surest, my surest standpoint. All right, comments, um, it's great to see reuse of a vacant site, that's good to see that happen, although the vacated one. We'll see how that goes, but, uh, good to see that one brought back into use. And, uh, does back up to some residential, but there's, there's some, some woody trees in there, we gotta make sure that's enough screening in there for the resident, for the houses behind. And, uh, I'd say take a look at the, make sure the sidewalk is, uh, possible, that, I think there was somebody's comment, as well as the, and the police heads up issue, some concerns about, uh, surveillance or something, so.
Okay, yeah, but we went through the comments, so we'll go through the, the, you know, surveillance stuff and the lighting. Um, the existing buil- building has quite a bit of, uh, lighting, wall sconces, and there is one light pole that's in the parking lot. So at some point, we'll have to have, um, the current owner maybe have central oxygen turn on electricity, so we can check some lighting levels.
Yeah.
Um, but there's a lot of stuff in place, in terms of landscaping, it needs to be cleaned up, and there is stuff overgrowing into the sidewalks, so it's, um, we'll, you know, check the conditions and all that.
And I think I'd like to, you know, the the one-way circulation they had coming in off of Main Street and coming down off the other one, because if you're trying to come out onto Main Street directly.
Off of Woodcliff?
Yeah, then, so you come out onto Woodcliff.
Right.
And then that's easier to turn to get out of Main Street from there versus coming out the other exit.
Yeah, I mean, I think, so when this, when Capola's was set up, the site plan that we based our drawings off of were from a site plan that was done from Ed Lodi's office back in the late seventies, and the traffic pattern was one way on that entrance off of Main Street. The exit is onto Woodcliff where it curves around, so it's a little bit awkward there, but the way the site is set up and the rock ledge, it's, makes total sense, so.
Yeah, I think that's, that'd be good to keep that pattern, because trying to get out of Main Street, if cars are parked there, it, it's hard to sit around them, so.
Right.
All right, sounds good.
I move the planning board defer further action on this application and direct the applicant to respond to comments of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies, and said responses to be reviewed by the planning department. Ask adequacy and completeness included of not limited to one through eight.
Second.
Uh, sorry, one through eleven.
Second again. Moved in seconded, call to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion passes six to zero. Thanks, good luck, and thank you very much, see you soon.
All right, thank you.
Next up, Eastdale Village, number eighteen. Marty Hall, come on down.
Good evening, thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, Jeff Kane, representing, um, MHTC Development and, uh, Eastdale Village. Uh, can I share my screen, Mr. Chairman? So, um, their, our application tonight is really for, um, to add fourteen parking spaces. And before I get into the specifics of the fourteen parking spaces, I wanted to take a minute and just talk about why. And, uh, there seemed to be some question, um, about, uh, why do we need to add more parking at Eastdale? And even the, the county planning's comments is there's plenty of parking at Eastdale now, and I think that's just, at least from their perspective, I don't, I'm not sure they, they really under. I don't know that they've invested certainly not as much time as this board has, they haven't invested as much time in in understanding how the traffic patterns really work there. And so I, and I just wanted to take just a couple of minutes and kind of run through why we're asking for for more parking, if I can, um, if I can work through this. Um, just, uh, and again, the, to kind of the, the big picture here, this is the west side and, and we have, um, really, our, our commercial core and our, uh, well, get my, uh, my, on my corner here, our commercial core and the residential core, both kind of separates the, uh, the site. And I blow up here on the, on the commercial core, highlighted in the, in the area here, and to understand that the parking, the residential parking is really kind of set differently from the, uh, from the, from the, the commercial parking. So in this commercial area, um, there are three hundred and six parking spaces, and that includes the forty-six parking spaces that were recently approved by the board over in this section, um, but, uh, but have not yet been constructed. Um, there's almost eighty thousand square feet of commercial users in this area, and that gets us to a parking ratio of three point eight six parking spaces per thousand square feet. Um, it's a little, a little marginal in terms of how much parking we have on this side of the street for the, uh, for the, for the, for the, the committed users. Um, the parking isn't limited, and the site isn't limited just to the one side, but it, but we do look at, you know, both each, each site separately, and, and, and we look at the, at the parking combined. So on the other side of the street, the east side of the street, again, we have the, you know, the commercial core and the residential area. And zoom in to the commercial section here, um, you have a hundred and ninety-four parking spaces, uh, and almost thirty-six thousand square feet of, of commercial. So a little better parking ratio with five point four two parking spaces per thousand, uh, so that, uh, that, that, uh, that, that works pretty, pretty well on this side. Um, so then you combine them, right, so you're looking at the, at the, at the whole site here, forty-four running, uh, running down the, down the middle of the site. Uh, because we know certainly in, um, uh, busier times, people will, will park on one side of the street and walk over, cross forty-four to the other side. We know that's a, and we support that, uh, that, that type of movement, we spend a lot of time and, and money in, in improving the, uh, the pedestrian access along forty-four. So we, we know that that's gonna, that's gonna be the case. So when you, when you look at this combined, again, the, the commerce, two commercial cores here, there are five hundred and fourteen parking spaces, and that number includes the fourteen that we've asked for tonight, but just for, to keep the, to keep the number, uh, constant. Uh, almost a hundred and fifty, fifteen thousand square feet of commercial users. Um, so we have four, four, almost four and a half, um, parking spaces per thousand square feet. Again, seems like that, that seems like it ought to be enough parking, Jeff, how can, how can we adhere? Um, so the, but the reality is, once you get into some of the details, uh, it's a little different. So what is in the, what's in that commercial core? We kind of broke out the, the uses by, by category, office, retail, restaurant, medical, uh, the N, and, and other, and other is, you know, it's fun not to get to categories, but it really is more like personal service uses, um, physical therapy, um, florist, those types of uses, uh, end up in the, in the other category. But the two biggest categories, the restaurant and medical, those are, uh, more than fifty-five percent of the total, and those have a higher parking demand than the, than the standard, um, uh, commercial, commercial users. So the four and a half per thousand, well, it might be, you know, pretty good for, for commercial, is, again, it's, uh, it starts to become, uh, tighter of, based on the, the specific tenant mix that we've seen evolve at, at Eastdale. Um, and they also, you've got to remember, in the commercial core, we have residences above those apartments, and those, uh, again, those are separate from kind of the residential core where people have, um, uh, they're given one parking space, and then there are other visitor spaces. Here, there aren't assigned parking spaces for those residences, so we have a total of fifty-four apartments in those, uh, those sections, nineteen on the, on the west side, thirty-five on the east side. See, those spaces which get, uh, get into the, uh, into the, uh, into the mix of, of parking, so that, you know, that, um, uh, when you look at, well, if, if, of the five hundred and fourteen parking spaces combined, um, uh, if, if even ten percent of those spaces, if fifty spaces were taken by residential, suddenly we're down to a ratio of, of four per thousand overall. And that's, uh, that's, 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 we think that'll work for us, but it's, uh, certainly not, not a lot of parking available here. And, um, you know, we, you know, as you stayed here, we really are committed to building as few spaces as necessary. We don't want to overbuild, um, uh, it's, uh, it's expensive, it's maintenance, it's expensive, it's, uh, it's, it's, it's not good for the environment. So we're trying to build only as many as we really have to build. We understand that sharing parking site-wide between the users, we have different peaks and different users, we have different peaks in the residential and the, uh, and the commercial, that all helps to mitigate the parking concerns. Um, but sometimes we think we, uh, we really need more parking, um, so, which is why, which is why we're here. Um, and, you know, we're, we're probably here, and we're probably talking about parking more often than, uh, than, than we could have, we could have, we could have, you know, day one, said, we want to build all this parking and, um, and, and not had to come back and talk to you, but that's not really how we've wanted to approach this. We wanted to build these as we've, uh, as we've, we've, we've needed to, and so that's why we're here, again, talking about parking once again, and so, again, appreciate that you're allowing us to come and, 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 and talk to you. And we're also talking right now because we're starting to build in that, uh, the foundations are in, um, and, and this quadrant behind the, uh, the L and the P buildings, and so, um, that, that parking expansion is in this, uh, this corner, and we'd like to, we can build it, like to build it now rather than have to come back at some point in the future and build the parking here. We think that based on what we know now, now is the time to build the parking in this quadrant, so that's why we're here, uh, we're here right now, asking for this, for this approval. So the specifics, um, it's, uh, fairly straightforward, this is again, that, uh, that same quadrant, um, uh, the, the potential future, or the, 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 the parking is in this, the area label is potential future parking, and that area was really reviewed by you, um, uh, you both, the board and the, and the consultants, uh, at Site Plan Amendment ten, as, as we were asked to provide a layout of what that potential future parking area could look like. So we, we did schematics, didn't do, didn't do grading, didn't do landscape plan, just kind of did a layout of what, what the parking could look like. Um, and at that point, we netted, uh, this is seventeen additional parking spaces, that was before building P was, uh, was even on the plan. Um, uh, so it's a, it's a, the plan has evolved, uh, building P has been added. Uh, you know, one of the comments, I think appropriately from, from Eric, is that the, the window that we provided on the site plan wasn't really kind of at the right, same scale as the others, so I have a little bigger window here for you to see, but we've got fourteen parking spaces in here, uh, really, the, probably the only significant change is we, we slid the, uh, refuse area back, so you weren't parking behind the refuse area as you were in the, uh, in, in, kind of the sketch plan. So we just really kind of slid this, uh, slid this back against the, against the line, um, and then the parking changed in the corner here with building P. But it's these fourteen spaces right here that, uh, that really we're, uh, we're talking about this evening. Um, but otherwise, it's, it's, again, very close, and that was really reviewed as part of the, uh, part of the original seeker review, uh, when the seeker findings were last read adopted of what Site Plan Amendment, uh, ten, so. That's the, uh, that's the outline behind why we're here tonight, happy to take, uh, take any, any questions or comments I could have, thank you.
All right, thanks, Jeff. Um, go to Eric for the department recommendation.
Sure. Uh, the application is on for consideration for site plan approval, uh, for the seeker, uh, it's a, it's a negligible impact if the board's in agreement. Um, there is a finding for that, uh, and for a condition to approval if the board is inclined. Uh, we have, there's a few comments, not very many. Um, there, the two issues are really, as Jeff pointed out very, very capably, our change in the parking multiplier, adding a new multiplier for the development, specifically for restaurant uses distinguished from, uh, commercial and, uh, from other commercial uses, uh, which will be helpful going forwards, as well as for the specific fourteen spaces proposed. Um, a couple minor comments, uh, one correction, the review comment number seven was a typographical error, uh, the tables were submitted, where it says they were not submitted back. Uh, but they, in, in, at any case, uh, the comment was to, to make that they would be further reviewed, uh, for final, uh, signature of the board is inclined to go with a condition approval. Uh, you also have in your packets a copy of the seventh, of the most recently approved plan for comparison, which was there, uh, reminder window, as Jeff mentioned, um, and you're welcome to discuss it and take action as you see fit.
Great, thanks, Eric. Go to Andy for engineering comments on this one.
Uh, so, yeah, so the, uh, the proposed parking spaces, um, are along the, I guess, it would be the subalable boundary of the site, uh, where there was previously some snow storage area proposed, um, I had raised some concerns about that, but I did speak to the project engineer yesterday morning, um, and he reminded me that there were some additional snow storage areas added as part of one of the previously, um, previously approved site plans. Um, so I think that, that, that should address that comment. Um, I also note that there's retaining well-proposed along that same property line. Um, I was looking for a little more information on that, no, nothing that couldn't be addressed as part of, of conditional approval. Particularly about the height of the wall, Jeff, you, you don't happen to have an? Jeff, you don't happen to have an idea of how high that wall is?
It was, I think at its max, it was just below four at the, at this corner down here, if I'm right.
So that's, and that's fine. Just kind of looking for those details to be added to the plan. And then the only other thing was, there's a landscaping plan, which is good, and looking for screening to the property to the south. I did have some concerns about where the trees were proposed at the top of the wall, just looking for some minor modifications of where they would be placed to make sure everything is stable and no issues are resulted to the wall as a result of growing trees over the years. So, that's it.
All right, thanks, Andy. It's time for public hearing. So move the open to public hearing?
Second.
Moved to the second. Call to question, all of us in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six to zero. Anyone on the call can stop sharing for me, Jeff? See if anybody is waving their hand frantically to speak on this project. Got a lot of people on there now. Standing down, I move the close to public hearing?
Second.
Moved to the second. Call to question, all of us in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six to zero. Go around the board for comments. Start with the poll.
I don't have any comments. Thank you.
Steve?
No comment.
Joe?
How confident are you that we're not going to require any additional parking after this amendment? I know it's kind of a loaded question.
The, yeah, you know, I'm not, I'm not super confident that we won't come back. And I think that's, that's, again, it's intentional on our part to only have to come back when we need it. So, you know, what I know now, based to the tenant mix and as the tenant discussions have gone on, yeah, I think we're fine. You know, if those users change in the next six months, you know, users come and users go until they're here. So if that changes significantly and the type of user came, then yes, we might come back. So, you know, I'm happy now, but the conditions could change, which would mean I'd want to come back and ask for more.
And I would just also say, you know, in addition to that loaded question, I do appreciate sort of the precise nature in which you're addressing the parking and the course of a blinded approach. So, the good and bad, so.
Thanks, Joe. Ben?
Nothing.
Peter?
You're proposing going from four to four and a half per thousand square feet. When we approved the project, the county's biggest, one of the county's objections was that we had built in too much parking, it was a surplus amount. But has anybody done the calculation to determine what effect going from four to four and a half is will have on the balance of parking that's available?
Two inches. One, yes, we have looked at what that, kind of that multiplier means, but the, I want to say the multiplier-
Could you share that with us?
I, I think I did share it, and I may look for a second, but I think that was in my, I thought that was in my letter. But one of the things about the multiplier is, it's not, the board determined that there's enough parking. The multiplier, at least for me, was a way to kind of keep track of what are the users, what impact are the specific types of users having on the demand that we see? You know, which is not a, it's not a, it's not a, yeah, we are entitled to four and a half per thousand. It's just a tool.
That makes sense. That's good judgment on your part. My concern is, you know, at what point do we run out? We just want to get over our skis here and then look up all of a sudden, and because of the type of users that you're, that are being selected, that are selecting your site, we don't have ample parking to cover them.
Well, right, and-
I'm just saying-
No, no, but you're absolutely, you're absolutely right, which is why I changed the multiplier, because it was a way to, for I think us both to assess, what is the impact of that user having on the project?
Right.
It was just a way of presenting data. It wasn't, again, meant to provide a floor or a ceiling on parking. It was just a matter of, hey, this is a reality that we're seeing.
We have a quick question for Eric. Eric, are we keeping an eye on this in terms of the balance of available parking? Are we looking forward?
I don't think I've approached it in quite that way, but with each revision, there's even a comment in here, the development program tables get reviewed. And maybe another way Jeff might have, or the way I might answer your question, maybe on behalf of Jeff, or another way of looking at it is that that program table projects out, it has to assign a projected use to all of the buildings in the project and to allocate parking to each of them. And as they, the project has been built out, as the uses have changed, Jeff has updated those tables accordingly. The unbuilt buildings have parking assigned to them for the use, so that, and that is the, and then there's analysis that there's a total parking demand from the project built and unbuilt, in total, and then there is a total parking on the plan. And those have been available throughout the course of the project for staff and for the board to review. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, and it said, to you accepting the responsibility, when somebody comes in and applies for space, and I hope people continue doing it, you will have in mind?
Yes, because, yes, we do, because, and Eric is exactly right, the unassigned buildings are assigned one of those kind of categories of use, and some of them because I know what's coming, some because I hope they keep guessing what's coming, so they try to match. And so that is a, yeah, that's why we, again, we think we have, we think we have enough parking.
I just want to make sure that we have an accurate account of the number of parking spaces that we have on that site that are remaining available.
I mean, for example, if just, if the applicant wanted to take a large chunk of residential and turn it to commercial with a much higher parking demand, it would change the calculation of parking on the site, and they would have to demonstrate that there's enough parking to meet that demand, or come back to you with a proposal for how they're going to deal with it.
I just want to be certain that we know how many parking spaces are there.
Yes.
And I'll also say that in answer to your first question, what is the impact in terms of changing that multiplier, what does that do on our demand projections? That was in my, in my cover letter, the-
The dog ate my homework.
Yeah, you're right, right. It increased, showed an increase in parking demand on the west side by fourteen parking spaces, but we have a number of restaurants there. And on the east side, it increased demand by four parking spaces. So, that was the, and, and again, why, why are we picking on restaurants? It's not, it wasn't so much patrons, that there are more employees there in some of these cases. Even some of the smaller shops, you know, the five hundred square foot, well, there's still three people working there. And it's, so the, even the four and a half per thousand doesn't necessarily grab that, but it's, in that kind of, because it is-
Is that, did you find that that's one of the reasons why the medical facility, is it because of the employees, the staff, that they're using up a lot of-
Yes, which, and that was entirely expected. And the nice thing about having that medical use is, you know, again, those peaks don't necessarily match the restaurant peaks, and so there really is a nice meshing there of uses. But yes, we expect those employees, those ratios with the medical, as well as the visitors, but that's, and those have worn out to be pretty accurate.
Thanks. We should hope to entice some of the employees to live here so that they walk along.
There are some. We have, we, some, our employees live there, right? So, yeah, there's, so, yes, there, we, there are a number who live and work on the, on the site, and it's interesting.
Yes, my main concern is the, you know, now you're encroaching on that one house for whatever reason was not part of the overall plan. So you have to make sure that is screened properly. Some, there's one large pine tree there they have on their site that are probably, but other than that, what's proposed for screening? Don't headlights, trying into their windows and things like that.
Right, and we've got, right, fence and landscaping there is against the property line.
Yep. All right.
I move the planning board grant conditional amended site plan approval for the Eastdale Village seventeenth amended site plan subject to the following. Respond to comments of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies and set responses to be reviewed by the planning department as adequacy and completeness inclusive of, but not limited to, one through five.
Before we vote on that, can we vote on the one before?
Okay.
Thanks.
Thanks, Mike.
I don't know.
All right, I move the planning board find that the Eastdale Village eighteenth amended site plan involves incremental changes to the Eastdale Village project of negligible magnitude and scope and that are no significant and consistent with the previous SEAKER findings adopted March fifteenth, two thousand and eighteen, and amended September seventeenth, two thousand and twenty, as modified by the proposed Eastdale Village application received April twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty-two.
Second. Moved to the seconded for SEAKER contingency. Call to question, all of us in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six to zero.
Does she have to read what you need it?
And, we do have a motion that's been read and-
I move the planning board grant conditional amended site plan approval for the Eastdale Village seventeenth amended site plan subject to the following. Respond to comments of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies and set responses to be reviewed by the planning department as adequacy and completeness inclusive of, but not limited to, the following, one through five.
Move to the seconded for grant conditional. Call to question, all of us in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six to zero. Thanks again, Jeff.
Thank you all.
Nice to see things continue to move along out there with construction.
Thanks. We really have, right, this has been very busy, both sides of the street, and either you've seen a lot of, a lot of new buildings, so we are moving ahead.
Any, any projection as to an end date, total end date for the project?
As I, as I heard Joe say the other day, we've only got twenty-three more buildings.
That answers that.
Right.
Have a good night. Next up is Vassar College Housing Renovations, I think, I saw Ken outline there.
Good evening. This is Chairman of the Board members. We are, you can hear me correct?
Yes.
Okay. We're here tonight, if it's all right, I'm going to just pop open my screen and do a screen share. So, we're here tonight to talk about a minor renovation to the existing faculty housing located at seventy-nine Raymond Avenue, one seventy College Avenue. This sits on a thirty-eight point nine acre parcel that has multiple faculty houses up and down Raymond Avenue, stretches from Hooker to College Avenue. The one seventy College Avenue is located up, basically up to the College Avenue side by Raymond, and then the seventy-nine Raymond is kind of midway down around Chicago Hall on the west side of Raymond Avenue. The total project's areas are relatively small, point one five acres for seventy-nine and point two seven acres for one seventy. With that, I'll turn it over to Sean in the office to talk about seventy-nine.
Seventy-nine, David, seventy-nine is an existing three-story wood frame structure with approximately four bedrooms, small existing parking area, and a wood deck. The proposed renovations are mainly interior to comply with all ADA requirements, and adding a six-bedroom to the structure. Those renovations of a ramp and deck are point one five acres for this little disturbance, so zero point five three for both. The deck and the ramp with the walk, main of the work here for this portion for seventy-nine is all interior work, but just the air, and the walk.
The, just existing parking lot will remain up front and utilized for the houses, the residents as they go forward. This is a kind of an existing conditions plan of, from the architect as to what's there now in the bedrooms and locations and fire access. Some of the renovations, they're still working on exactly how to comply or to change some of the documents, and there may be some interior modifications to pathways and things like that, but that'll all be handled at the building department level when they get to pass site plan approval so they can move forward with a building department permit. One seventy College Avenue, located, as we said, up on the upper head, is a two and a half story structure, has a screened-in porch on the east side that will remain. Again, the same thing here to seventy-nine. Most of the renovations are all interior. This has a minor exterior component because there is no off-street parking here for this particular house. There never was, there was a grass path that they just parked in the lawn in the back off of Dean's Lane, which is a private lane owned by the college in the back. We are proposing to add a fifth bedroom to the existing structure, which has four now, and add a five-car parking lot behind it. As you can see, there's a proposed parking with a gravel entry, the only parking area of park surface is going to be at the actual parking area, so that it meets for ADA compliance for an access and a walkway in with the sidewalk. Again, just under point two seven acres, under point three acres of disturbance, again, a small area. The interior structure, you know, currently four bedrooms, there's an attic up top that doesn't, it's finished, but there's nothing in it. They're going to convert the attic up top to a bedroom to add to the number of bedrooms for the whole thing. And with that, I'm going to stop sharing. If I can figure out how to stop sharing. There it is.
Pretty straightforward, right? Thanks, Ken.
Beyond.
Eric? Sure. This project, it was a Type II action, SEAKER review, it's a site plan application for these two locations. The, there's a few comments, not too many. I might, before the board discusses, I might ask the applicant to address a couple of the comments briefly, one with respect to the parking adequacy at seventy-nine Raymond, since you're adding an additional unit and the parking area is not striped anyway, we just want to make sure there's enough space for the number of units that will be there. And then also, just to clarify for the board to discuss if they want to, if there are any measures for trash storage or for lighting of the site. Otherwise, once the applicant's done that, the board's free to discuss, we have resolutions to identify the SEAKER category for the public hearing, and if the board's inclined to grant a conditional site plan approval.
Thank you.
I'll jump back in, Eric, if that's all right. Because I, sure, I talked about it, went through, and I forgot to mention it. We are not proposing any new lights outside. It is a residential district with that field of faculty housing. We felt that the lighting that is there, that is today, is going to remain. As far as the parking at seventy-nine, these are faculty houses, but they're done differently. They're fellowship-type rooms where it's a faculty that may rent a actual room, not necessarily the whole entire structure. That is the way some of the other houses or faculty houses are on the area. So, a lot of them don't come with cars. So we feel, based off of our discussions with Vassar, that the adequacy of the parking for both locations are totally fine for who they plan to put into these units going forward. One of the things that was discussed in the comments with regard to one seventy that I neglected is, there is a tree that we're trying to work around, but it is dead, so they're likely moving on or remove that tree during construction. That project is not slated till the fall at the earliest, so we will work to comply within a window for bat habitat when that tree is, you know, scheduled to come down. Whether the project goes right away or if it prolongs, we'll move to have that tree removed during that period of time.
All right, that was one question mine. Thanks, Ken.
And I'm sorry, I also forgot to mention that whatever the provisions are for that potential BAT mitigation should probably be identified before the board votes on a conditional approval. In other words, if they're going to, if they're going to restrict the BAT, the cutting of that tree, or what other measure is required? I think Carol Mapp is going to discuss that with her comments.
Yeah, I was about to go to her next. Carol? You had some comments- You had some comments on the tree.
There you go. Yes, Ken and I discussed it, it's, it's just amidst a bunch of other shrubbery, so you really had to look up to see it, and it is covered, by the way, with poison ivy. It's quite lushly vegetated with poison ivy, so you might not even know it's dead. The other trees are not of concern, so, yeah, it just, it has to be addressed somehow, either with a condition that that tree doesn't come down till, at a later date, you know, once the moratorium is over with. Because of its location now, it's kind of iffy to say it's a health hazard at this point in time. But however the board wants to work, or they can possibly, you know, just not completely finish the, the parking area, just leave that one part undone until the tree comes down. But again, if it's not a big concern to wait till October, then that's probably just the best way to go about it.
That would be out of reference.
Okay. So then that would just have to be noted by the board and by the applicant that, you know, this, that won't be, won't happen until then, and just condition the approval upon that.
Okay, great. And I think it shows that you're keeping those other two large trees on the, along Dean's Lane there, so.
Yes.
Make sure those are protected during construction.
Yeah, and those are quite healthy.
Yep, they looked good. All right, thanks, Carol. Andy?
So, majority of my comments are, are related to ADA access as far as slopes and existing topography, so we're just looking for some spot elevations to confirm that all those requirements are met. Also had some questions about ADA parking and signage. Ken, is there any plan to stripe the, the existing parking lot on 79?
Uh, there wasn't, I don't see why we couldn't do it there either.
Okay.
But there wasn't at this moment, no.
Okay, all right, so something to consider. And then, you know, I realize this is a modification of an existing site, an existing house, but we do like to ask if, if at all possible, if you can, if you're willing to consider putting some of those roof leaders into some sort of infiltration practice, either a drywall or infiltration chambers, understanding that it's not necessarily required, so.
Um, I think at 170, we, we would definitely have that ability to do more of that because of the site work that's proposed, we are doing some excavation there, so, for the actual driveway and construct area, so putting something there that we can use to compensate for both of those makes a lot of sense for us. Relative to 79, given the tight constraints, we don't wanna go in, there's some mature trees in the back, and we don't wanna try to go through some of the roots systems, so we, we would opt to not do it on that particular one.
Okay, that'd be great.
I mean, or, or if you, even if 170 is a permeable pavement or something like that, it's, I guess that's a decision to make as well. All right, it's on for public hearing, first, this is the first.
I move the planning board determine that the proposal meets the criteria for a secret type-two action pursuant to seeker part 617.5(c)(11) and 617.5(c)(12), requiring no further environmental review.
Moved in seconded for secret type-two, called to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes six to zero. At this time, I move, we open the public hearing.
Second.
Moved in seconded, called to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes six to zero. Anyone on the Zoom call wish to comment on this project? If you're on Zoom, you can unmute yourself, or just raise your hand. Now, seeing none, I move we close the public hearing.
Second.
Moved in seconded, called to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes six to zero. Let's go around for comments, start with Peter.
Uh, no comment.
Ken?
I didn't see anything from the building or fire department, but you said one of those places is gonna have a attic converted to a bedroom?
Yes, it is, and it'll meet all the fire code requirements for building code upgrades, that's part of the building code review.
Getting in and out, accessible.
Yep.
Okay, just that's all?
Yeah, I just wanna point out that Tim Sicles did provide a comment, he said that although there were tentative floor plans in here, his no comment is just about the site plan. We will review the building plans in more detail when they're submitted to the building department and.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Yep. Fire escape, is it an issue always? Joan?
I have no comment.
Steve?
No comment.
Nicole?
No comments.
I guess, one of the comments, I think I already mentioned, you know, make sure the trees, the good trees are protected. Looks like you're doing this whole project to help come up, comply with the ADA for these apartments, which is great. And, I did have a question, you were talking about, talking about the parking, is, is there any zip cars on Vassar College site that people can use?
Uh, I do believe there is, but I'm not 100% positive to that. I know I've seen them there, but I don't know if there's an official station for them to get to zip cars.
Okay.
I can find out more about that, though, it's a good question.
Yeah, I mean, that, that helps with the parking issue as well. I noticed a couple of them there still at one point.
All right. Mr. Chairman, if, right now the condition calls for them to identify, mark that front lot to demonstrate one space per bedroom, and the applicant indicated that they're comfortable with less than that, so if the board could please provide, either modify the comment or provide some guidance as to that?
Sure, I, I think we would accept the partners there, but do we need to, by law, do we need to have one marked for handicap? So I was gonna ask you this question.
Uh, can we know, is there a requirement to mark the handicap spot?
I don't know for faculty, like a residential structure like that, it'd be something I'd have to check with the ADA regulations on, because you wouldn't typically mark one in your personal driveway even if you had an ADA person there, but Amy may know more.
So perhaps if the board's inclined to accept that, you could just change the comment to provide ADA marking if required by the building code?
Yes, that's, that's what I wanna do. All right, thanks, Eric. Yeah, I noticed you put an ADA marking on the, on the new one at 170, so that's what made me think of it as well. So we'll double check the code.
Uh, move to the.
Okay. I move the planning board grant conditional site plan approval for the Vassar College Housing Renovations, 79 Raymond Avenue and 170 College Avenue site plan application subject to the following: responded to the comments of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies, and said responses to be reviewed by the planning department as to adequacy and completeness inclusive of but not limited to the following one through seven, that the large dead maple that has been pointed out by Aspen Environmental to have possible bat habitat cannot be removed until after October.
Eight to, to modify, or, Tom, it doesn't, as discussed, or, to, to investigate if the code requires striping of the handicap spot.
And eight to?
But not, but not, otherwise it doesn't need stripping.
To investigate whether or not handicap, a handicap spot would have to be striped, is that what we're saying? Okay.
Hey, Nicole?
Yes.
Just so you can take out that large red maple, it is so dead, we don't know what it is.
Oh, you, you don't know that it's maple? Okay, I think the last time we spoke, you said it was maple.
Well, there's a couple others that are, but not that one.
Okay.
All right.
Second.
Second.
Moved in seconded, that's modified. Called to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes, motion passes, opposed, Ben?
No.
Okay, I, motion passes six to zero. Right?
Thank you, everyone.
Thanks.
And I assume you're gonna be submitting an application to, for the other house move at some point?
Yes, yes, that's coming in for Monday, for this coming month, so you'll have that on for the site plan amendment together.
Okay, great, thanks.
Thank you, everyone, have a good evening.
You too. Next up is Delverne Avenue subdivision. I see Amy out there somewhere.
Hi, I'm here, this is Amy from Dan Secosa, representing Delverne Avenue.
Welcome, Amy.
Hi, I'm just gonna show my screen.
Looks like some good progress.
So the last time we were here, we were showing a proposed total of seven lots, this is an existing parcel with an existing house, it is a total of 4.16 acres, and it's bifurcated by, that, the house is bifurcated by the village of Wapender Line. The village area is .30 acres, it's in the R20 zoning district, and the existing home will be on Lot 1, so now the proposal is for a total of six parcels with a 50-foot right-of-way extending to the Marco John property in the northeast portion up here. We are connecting, or we hope to connect to Tri-Muni for sewer, the water will be served by the Town of Poughkeepsie, and, um, we are gonna provide, excuse me, I propose brading easements for improvements in the site distance at this corner, at the turn. As far as changes to the plan, other than the layout going from seven lots to six lots, that's, that's basically, the rest is utility changes and things like that.
Yep, right, sounds good. Kristin?
Just shuffle around and bring it across the room. Okay, so thank you, Amy, real quick, the, the application is returning for a public, or I'm sorry, yeah, this is its first public hearing, and it's also on for seeker review and major subdivision review. You know, so, so we do recognize, staff recognizes that the applicant has gone back to the drawing board and, you know, has reduced the number of proposed new lots. There are still some concerns as it relates to, as the applicant has alluded to, water, sewer, and then of course, talking about the site distance, and I think, you know, there are just other concerns related to snow storage, but we see this, this particular appearance as, sorry, I was just like looking at one of my notes. We see this as a good starting point for a public hearing, so we'll hear any comment if there are any. We did receive a memo from one of the neighbors, and it should be a part of your packet this evening. It was also distributed to the applicant, but right now I think that there are still a number of outstanding items that need to be addressed, and perhaps, you know, and obviously I think the applicant is aware of that, but I think, you know, there might be some interim discussions that go, that occur offline subsequent to this planning board meeting, and then would allow for a more informed application resubmission at a future meeting. And with that, I would just pass to Andy.
All right, thanks, Kristin. Amy did, definitely a few issues to.
So I, you know, I have, I have quite a long list of comments that can be, you know, as, as the plans progress, I'm sure they'll, they'll be resolved, but some of the, the, the more pressing issues have to do with stormwater and the right-of-way that's proposed, and we appreciate the, the right-of-way that's been added to the, to the north for future extension, I think that's a good, good, good change, good planning practice. The, the project, based on the state stormwater management requirements, it, it's residential development that's proposing less than five acres of disturbance, so technically, the project by state requirements only is required to provide a SWIP for erosion sediment control practices. However, the town erosion sediment control and storm management code does allow us to ask the applicant to evaluate the, the runoff characteristics and impacts that the site will have, the project will have on downstream properties. So we've asked for that, we're still, we're still looking for that, and how they'll manage that runoff. And the, unfortunately, the proposal to, to have that, that stormwater management in the future extension to the north is not really something that we're looking for, because it would, it would kind of restrict the use of that area for future extension of the roadway, so we're gonna need to have some discussions about, about that, and possibly an offline meeting with Amy and her, and her colleagues to, to sort that out, how that's gonna work. We are also waiting some information, some information from, from Tri-Muni, like Amy said, for service of the project, because it is not in a town sewer district. And then there's, oh, I'm sorry, sewer's being served by, is proposed to be served by the village, the water will come from the town, that will require extension of water mains from the town along Galavere to provide service. That's, that's pretty much the gist of it, I won't, I don't need to go through all of my comments.
Yeah.
But like I said, happy to have an offline meeting with Amy if, if needed to sort some of this out.
Yeah, I think that'd be a good idea at this point, since there's still some issues, and they have to hear, negotiate and hear back from, from the sewer and the water as well, so. All right, thanks, Andy. At this point, I move we open the public hearing.
Second.
Moved in seconded, called to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes six to zero. Is there anyone on the call tonight, can you unshare your screen?
Yes.
See if anybody's waving. Anyone wish to comment on the Delverne application? Seeing none, I move we adjourn the public hearing to July 21, 2022.
Second.
Moved in seconded, called to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes six to zero. Go around the board for comments, start with Nicole this time.
Do you guys have a name for the road yet?
No, we don't.
Okay.
Amy Drive?
Yeah, Amy Drive. I try to sell that every time. We, it's usually one of the last things that we do, like we, the town board just voted on the South Hills Common road name yesterday.
Okay. Okay, yeah, just let us know, and I'm sure, you know, it would be a good idea to get that in soon, just because, you know, the fire department is gonna wanna know, water department.
Yeah.
All those things happen.
Yeah, that would be, yes, absolutely, for emergency purposes, but anyway, that is all.
All right, thanks, Steve.
Yeah, just a question that came up as a result of the feedback from the public, is there a line of sight issue with, where this is positioned?
There is right now, we're proposing to regrade, the existing house, the owner of the existing house is, and that'll all due to us doing a grading adjustment and then removing vegetation in the line of sight that would definitely improve what the situation is now. So that's to the east of the proposed road?
Yep.
Kinda just gonna cut back that hill?
Yeah, that, that sounded important based on the, the comments from the neighbor, seeing accidents at that area.
Yeah, there was a meeting on site that I was not at, but I think Kristin was, I'm sure you guys discussed it, I know it's definitely a concern.
Yes, we did meet, probably a year and a half ago, with the town highway superintendent and Andy, and I believe it was Brian Watts from your office, Amy.
Yeah.
Okay, did that, that's being addressed then, anything else, Steve?
No.
John?
Along the same, along the same lines, I thought I read about easement related to that, did I read that?
Agreed.
A grading easement, or, I forgot how it was.
It would be a grading easement and a site distance easement.
So who, whose obligation is it to maintain that going forward?
So the way the agreements work is, it's the obligation of the applicant to install and maintain, and, but the easement gives the town the right to go in and do it if the applicant doesn't, and then charge it against the property.
Great, thank you. You're welcome.
Thanks, Lisa. Ben?
No, I'm interested in Peter.
Can you share with us the extent of the conversations that you've had so far with Tri-Municipal?
Yeah, I honestly haven't had many conversations, I just submitted an incomplete application, I'm waiting for confirmation from the village engineer to confirm that we have, that Tri-Muni has the capacity. I'm waiting for confirmation from the village engineer to confirm that we have, that Tri-Muni has the capacity to accept the 2,080 gallons that we'd be proposing to send there daily. So that's the one piece of it.
What is your plan if Tri-Municipal doesn't have the capacity to provide?
We have to cross that bridge when we get to it. Hopefully, we don't have to.
I can let this board know that the, the village has a new village engineer, um, as of, I think, a month or so ago. So he's coming up to speed, but he is working on this project. And I do think that the village has the capacity, or that Tri-Muni does have the capacity. They're talking at about 2,800, I think, Amy gallons per day. So it seems like this is something that would be, um, that they probably will get a will-serv letter, but, um, we'll see what happens and have a contingency if we need to.
Uh, we have a letter from a, a neighbor.
Yep.
One of the comments that he makes is that there have been many accidents because it is a blind term and he's discussing the site distance here. And people have been killed on this turn and road. I'd like somebody on this staff to contact me with the traffic division with the town police department and just see how, how what the accident reports are for them. Now, right down the road from this building, I think it's what is referred to as the existing building on this map.
There's a big mirror that they put up because they can't see the, where the cars are coming.
Yeah.
I mean, that's a pretty good sign that you have a, a site distance problem there.
Yeah.
And I can tell you that people, I mean, I, I know these comments are credible because I've used that road often. And I know that people, I'm not the one to mention any names, you know, aren't, don't pay that much attention to the speed limit and, you know, it's a kind of a shortcut road. And it's, and it's fairly heavily used. You have a steep pitch going up the hill and you have a winding road. So we want to pay close attention to whatever remediation that you are proposing.
Yeah, and I would like to just point out to, to the applicant's credit that they did provide, um, two site distance calculations or just provided the data for lengths. And so what we'll do, um, from a ta- staff point of view, um, is we'll actually bring in a, our traffic engineer to actually verify the numbers that are being utilized to calculate those distances. Not that we think they're inaccurate, but, um, we will do that. And I think, um, it does, you know, the applicant is definitely amenable to working with us in terms of making sure that that site distance is clear. And I can certainly coordinate with the police department about accident data or we'll be able to coordinate that through our traffic engineer.
I just want to be certain that when the calculations are done, that the calculations reflect the actual speed that people are driving. Not the 30 mile an hour speed limit, but the actual speed that people are driving because of speed difference.
Yeah, I mean, it's hard to drive too fast through there, but, I mean, I will note the neighbor is right on the apex of one curve, but then if you come downhill, there's another, another apex right there.
I mean, we stood at the end of that driveway and when you look left leaving that one driving, driveway that's existing right now, it was, you know, yeah.
Yep.
Do you want me to, you want me to share my screen to show you where we're proposing to cut back the hill?
Sure, that might help us visualize it right now.
Hang on one second. Okay, so here is the existing house.
Yep.
And here's the proposed road. So these lines are the site distance lines. I am not sh- these are the proposed site distance lines. So we're proposing to cut back all of this grading up to this line.
Okay.
So that will give you the ability to, you know, kind of see at a direct line. It does improve the distance, but you're right. And we, uh, we established it based on the 25 mile an hour speed limit, which I think is what it is there. No matter.
Well, that is a significant cutback, I guess, is that, is that required?
Going on, on the other direction. See where that sharp curve is there?
What's that?
I mean, you have sharp curves on both sides of that driveway. Actually, I'm more concerned about the drive through the, on the left-hand side, the left curve, than I am on the right one. Right one is bad enough. The left one is also severe.
This, with the, this right?
Going to the west.
The one that would be on the west side of the driveway.
Okay.
I don't think it'd be down there as well. Does that...
It's possible that there's, you know, sometimes it's just a vegetation issue and I, I don't drive that road very often. So, but just speaking generally, there are times when we can cut back vegetation in the right-of-way to make it much better. But I'm sure since it is such a bad curve, I'm sure, uh, Mark Schreifer's on that.
Yeah, I mean, the water tank is right there somewhere.
Right. Yeah, that property there is the village water tank property.
So, so it's generally no, not much vegetation in front of it, I'll think, but maybe, maybe there is.
I think once you extend that sightline distance, I think you're going to see that you're going to have some vegetation.
So that's something to take a look at too then, Amy.
Okay.
Does that require a, uh, a retaining wall then, that cutback?
No, it doesn't. Uh, the grades are not really, the proposed grades are less than three-on-one.
Okay, great.
We're at three-on-one.
Anything else, Peter? No, thank you. All right, thanks. I think we talked about that a lot. And I also want to echo, thanks for cutting it back to six lots with the north access. That's more what we envisioned for this property, uh, for this development. And, uh, also note the neighbor had it mentioned, I don't know if that's a way to incorporate it in there to, to warn neighbors of possibly, you know, occasional noise of the way he uses his property, but...
Construction noise or just residential?
Residential noise. So you can take a look at his comment letter.
I think, I think his comment was actually that he makes the noise.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. TV's and stuff like that.
So he wants to warn, uh, warn any potential new house, and he'd like to do like an ag district notification. Yeah, so there's, there's margin. So we don't want to, so new neighbors moving in won't say, hey, wait a minute, you start complaining.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay.
I don't know if there's an official way to do that notification. All right, that's it, Ben?
That's it. I move the planning board to defer further action on this application and direct the applicant to respond to comments in writing of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies included, but not limited to the following one through line.
And I would add ten to, to look at the westbound approach also.
And ten to look at westbound approach for sightline.
And we're also going to be looking, doing some homework with the town, uh, PD about accident.
Oh, yes.
Yep, so usually in that case, we, you know, we have the applicant, we put that burden on the applicant and then it's verified by the town. So we'll certainly regroup with the applicant. Yes.
Okay. And do I have a second on that?
Second.
Moved in second. Called to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes, six to zero. Thanks again.
Thank you.
Good luck. We'll see you next time.
Have a good night.
Have a good night.
View a journalist to do, George Zee, Tucker Drive. I move that planning board adjourn the public hearing to June 16th, 2022.
Second.
Moved in second. Called to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes, six to zero. 511 Height Avenue. I move the planning board adjourn the public hearing to June 16th, 2022.
Second.
Moved in second. Called to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes, six to zero. Arlington Farms, Malabar. I move the planning board adjourn the public hearing to June 16th, 2022.
Second.
Quick question. That is, is anybody in contact with Malabar regarding the condition of the, of the property?
Yeah, we, we, the, the building department has been and we will, we'll be pursuing that number.
Thank you. Thanks.
It's been moved in second. Called to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes, six to zero. Is there any official motion that we could make here? Just, I think we maybe want to note that the applicant has submitted a request to have our application withdrawn from consideration and that's great. So noted, St. Shops, that 2245 South Road. At this time, I move we allow public to comment on any other agenda items on tonight's agenda. And please limit those comments to no more than three minutes.
Okay, second.
Moved in second. Called to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes, uh, six to zero. Anyone else wish to comment on the remaining agenda items? Seeing none, I move we continue the meeting.
Second.
Moved in second. Called to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes, six to zero. All right. Next up, we have a discussion about Fox Run Building A. Kelly?
Okay, good evening. Sorry, I didn't have my camera off. Thank you. Um, would it be okay, Mr. Chairman, if I show my screen?
Yes, please. Show all you can to make this, this is a difficult, uh,
It is.
photography issue here to look over.
Yeah, it really is. Okay. Just, if we can get this, okay. All right, um, let me just do a slideshow so this is bigger so you can see it. Okay. Um, so just for everyone's perspective, we just took some aerial photographs so you could see where, if everyone remembers, there were three buildings that were approved on this property. The one in the front is Building C. Um, the middle one is Building B. And the one in the green, which is being cited, is Building A. And that's the one that is the subject of the amended site plan approval that was previously before this planning board. Along the left, I don't know if you see my cursor when I move it, but along the left, okay, the brown area is, um, these are recent photos. So that's the proposed Duchess County Trail or the rail trail.
Yeah, Urban Trail is called.
Excuse me?
Urban Trail is the official name, I think.
Yep. Um, so that's just a perspective of the location. So this is just looking the opposite way. So Building C on the end, Building B in the middle, and then this is Building A, and then this is the Urban Trail. Um, the reason that we are before you is because the plans that we had, and I think the town had, presented the construction and the design of the rail trail very differently than it's being constructed today. And we're asking, uh, the town for an amendment to the site plan to modify the west side of our building to address landscaping and pedestrian access that went through, uh, the west side of the building. So this was the approved landscaping plan and the area that we're talking about extends from here and then all the way over to here. So it's really just the west side of this building. Our property line is that line that I'm showing. And then obviously, immediately on the other side is the Urban Trail and then this is Fulton. So again, this was the approved landscaping plan. And at the time, we all, I say we, meaning we and we're represented to the town, that the urban trail was going to be an at-grade, uh, trail system. And therefore, our site was higher in grade than the actual final, uh, trail system. And so we worked diligently with the town, we worked with the, the departments, Andy's, um, office to address the really like the minimus stormwater in here to make sure that it was all collected and it didn't go off-site over to, um, onto the county urban trail. And so, uh, I would say, uh, six weeks ago, we finally received the plans from the county on the design of the trail and it's very different than what it was being proposed to us. And so now the trail is actually, uh, two to almost three stories taller than our building in this particular area. And that's because there is a bridge that's going to be proposed over Fulton. And the height of the bridge is so high because obviously the vehicles, you know, trucks and so forth need to be able to get underneath it. And then the height of the trail actually grades down, grades down, grades down, grades down. And it's until you get over here where we have, um, the basketball court is where the, finally, the, the, um, bridge or the trail becomes at-grade. Um, so this whole area is elevated. And so what happened is in this area where we thought we were, um, landscaping to an area that, you know, dropped on the other side of us is now the trail is, in some instances, uh, over 20 feet of a steep slope that brings you up to the bridge, which is the trail. And so they're putting this bridge up and there isn't any open space underneath of it. They're filling it. And so on the edge of our property, they're, um, filling it with, you know, dirt. So it's going to be a slope that's, you know, almost one-on-one. And the treatment of that slope, uh, whether it's grass, how it's going to be maintained, what, you know, what they're doing with it has yet to be provided to us. And so what we're asking the planning board is, we are near completion of this building. Um, we're hoping for occupancy August 1st. So within the next few weeks, we'll start the CO process, certificate of occupancy process with the town, um, to close out this building permit. However, we, we really won't be able to plant anything in this area because we're not sure exactly what the end product is going to be with respect to the rail trail. So we presented this plan to the town. Um, this is the amended landscaping plan. And we've removed the trees, um, and, you know, the boxwoods and so forth that we had proposed in this area. And we're showing it as grass. And so we're asking that the board approve its amended landscaping plan. It, there's obviously, you know, we, we have a significant hardship here, um, with respect to not knowing what's going on with the rail trail. Um, in addition, there's, uh, on the approved site plan, uh, some of the members, if you recall, I know some members are new, there was a sidewalk that we had proposed. This is the approved site plan that allowed pedestrians to walk on the sidewalk and then down to Fulton to be able to meet the sidewalk, um, on Fulton Street. And at the time, this, it was our understanding that this sidewalk was actually going to be raised and it was a ramp that was going to be going up through the bridge, uh, through rail trail, the connection for the rail trail. And so, um, at this point, you could have made an at-grade connection to the sidewalk. But at this time, you know, we asked, uh, Eric and the chairman to please come out to the site so you could see this. It is impossible to make this connection right here for the, um, sidewalk connection to the existing connection on Fulton Street. So we've proposed, um, whoops, sorry, a sidewalk that will, I know it's hard to see it on here, but a sidewalk that will bring, uh, pedestrians across this crosswalk. And we're proposing a new sidewalk here, a sidewalk along the entrance and then a connection here to Fulton. So in my opinion, I think it's an insignificant modification to the plan, but we wanted to present it to the planning board. We had presented it as a field change and everyone suggested that we presented to the planning board so they could see that that sidewalk connection was changing. And the last item, um, that we were asking for is on the landscaping plan. We were showing, um, arbivory in this area to be planted. So, um, to some extent, we were trying to keep residents and so forth from utilizing this back area as a crossing point because there's no longer the accessibility to the rail trail. And also, there are some patios back here that are for resident use. And so the arbivory, um, uh, you know, by no means barricading or blocking people to use the open space, but it's, um, intended to be just a, um, uh, to try to restrict people from using this entranceway to cross over to Fulton. Those are the three items that were, you know, we have in front of you. There was originally a, a plan to put a fence around the building and so we've taken the fence off. There's no fence, um, anymore. There's no gates, there's no barriers and so forth, which was the original discussion. And you can see the fence has been removed, um, the original discussion that we had had with the planning department. So that's, that's the proposal. Um, I have just a couple of other photos so you can get an idea of, of the perspective. So, you know, this black felt fence is predominantly our property line in some areas. It's a chain link fence just to see the limited area that you have. Um, the bridge is actually up here. It's above, if you go up there, there's little transformers on this pole. It's actually above them. So that's how high the bridge is coming in over onto our property. So it's, in some instances, it's on our, um, third floor. Uh, that's where the level is, you know, when people are looking out of the trail. Uh, this is just another perspective looking down at the building, um, you know, at the site. So, uh, I'll leave it at that. If you'd like me to stop sharing the screen, I can stop and certainly answer any questions that you have.
Yeah, let's leave that up, let, leave that photo up for a minute. That kind of shows that, I mean, right now, the rail trail's in a trench, but they're going to fill it all up so that they don't have an at-grade crossing there. And the ramp is going to be extended all the way back. So far, it's unlikely the ramps on the current rail trail that are not AVA compliant with this ramp, they want to be AVA compliant. So it's going to be a very long, you know, football field or more of a ramp going all the way back to the center.
And all these poles, all these light, I forgot to tell you, all these utility poles that are over on this side are all getting moved onto this side. So you can see this is the... So you can see, this is the start of the new poles. So this whole area, this whole spot is gonna be also aligned with the utility pole.
Yeah, that, that may affect what you do with landscaping.
Right.
What's gonna prevent erosion from that raised trail to the property where the building is? Yeah, that's, that's a good question.
That's up to them, that's up to the county and when they build it.
And they've got to...
That's their responsibility to maintain that and stabilize the slope. Uh, we have copies of the plans, I haven't looked at it in detail to see what they're proposing, but I'm assuming, you know, it would be silt fence and, you know, topsoil seed, probably some rolled erosion control fabric on the slopes, since it's so steep.
Do you have any other comments, any of the other, so far?
No, I mean, the only, I mean, the landscaping I'll leave to you. The only other comment I have is with respect to the, the stormwater on, on the, this project and how that's gonna be managed. Because right now, you know, the plan was, um, we had them prepare in the upper, you know, the corner there where the, the angle, um, trees are proposed, it's, it's supposed to be a level spreader that discharges to the rail trail. At this point, we're assuming that there's gonna be a swell or some sort, something along the toe slope for the, the rail trail that goes to the south. And we're assuming that that would discharge into that, but we don't really have, again, I haven't looked at the details to see how, what, what they're prepared to do there.
Yep. So it's gonna have, you know, runoff from both this project as well as the rail trail, channeled down together.
So the conversation today, again, it's, it's really daily, uh, back and forth with the Commissioner of Public Works and with the head of the Engineering Department, was that, um, it's an ongoing dialogue, you know, they, they really, um, the way that they advance projects are differently than private sector projects advance, and so they're more of a design build. So the stormwater is an ongoing project. Um, we, we did go through a lot of this with Andy when we were at the site. We'll continue to keep him involved, um, to the extent that, you know, any of us have any say with respect to what they do. But we are still proposing our level spreader and our drainage, you know, again, we gave all of our files to the county today, so that they have them. So it's, unfortunately, it's gonna be an ongoing, uh, process with the county.
Yep, sounds like it's gonna go on for a while, but you wanna get the building open, so that's...
Yeah, right, correct.
Kind of a discussion, I'll go around, see if anybody else has any comments, so, Peter?
It's, uh, difficult to predict what the final product is gonna look like.
Exactly.
That's, that's the problem. I mean, who knows what the county, apparently, they have, haven't come up with a final determination. We don't know what kind of drainage they're gonna be providing. So how do you, I mean, how do you plan for planting? You don't really know, even the surface area that you're engaging. That's, that's my concern.
Yep, it's, uh, that's why we're coming, they're gonna draw the landscaping that's on the plan for every other area around the building.
I, I'm sure that the, the Fox Run would do a great job, I mean, they have so far.
Yep.
Now, my problem is, uh, our inability to predict what that area's gonna look like for. You know, what type of plantings are you gonna, will, will survive in that environment? We don't know what that environment is gonna be.
Right, Ben, I think...
My sentiments exactly, yeah. I, the other side of the building, we could do something with that, but, side by the rail trail, we, we don't know what's gonna happen. So how can we determine now? We don't know.
Yeah, I'm with Ben, I, I mean, I'd, I'd be comfortable letting that the, uh, that would be the north side.
The west, west side.
The east side, the east side, you know, going forward with that, does the rail trail affect that?
The inside of it.
But on the east side, the west side is different slope.
So I think what the applicant is proposing is grass, and that's it. And she's, and they're asking for, this board to do final sign-off, as opposed to coming back later, once things are in place, with a different landscaping plan.
I don't think grass would be acceptable.
That, that's correct, thank you.
For the fi, for the final, yes. To get the CO for August 1st.
So, uh, Kelly, would it be possible to, um, once, once, you know, basically you would get your TCO in August, when everything else is done, right? Um, would you be able to come back, once the, the county does their construction, and you are, you know exactly what's gonna happen there, we all know what's gonna happen there, and, and just, and share the landscaping plan with the planning board for a final look? And then just, is it, does that work with your schedule?
So it, it, it actually doesn't, and this is why, is that, um, we, we're trying to get the CO in August and not the TCO, so that, you know, it's, with the, with the way this project is financed, we need to close it out. And, um, our perspective is that we're proposing, you know, obviously you know that we, we love landscaping, and we always do, I thank you for saying that, Peter, that we do a great job, because I think they always add a lot of landscaping, and there was a lot of landscaping proposed here. But in this particular situation, we're asking to propose grass, and leave it as grass at that point. If, at such a time as the project is complete, that it makes sense to add trees here, for our project, we would love to do that, and we could certainly come back to the planning board to add those. But at this point, we're proposing to leave grass. I just wanna, you know, predominantly landscaping serves multiple purposes, really, it's the residents, um, and then it's the off-site screening of the project. And so in this particular scenario, our building will be dwarfed by this rail trail. And views of the site, as you come up Fulton, are, will never be able to be addressed with landscaping at this point. They would, they're at the bottom of a slope that in some instances is 20 feet tall. So I don't know what the benefit at this point of trying to leave that open as far as what we might do in the future. But we would, of course, come back and show the town if we wanna add landscaping here after this is done. The, the other issue is maintenance, and, you know, how is, if this is grassed, how is the county gonna maintain it without coming onto the property and using our property to access it? And so we don't wanna block that area where they may be going in there to do, uh, maintenance of the slope. It's a very frustrating, I'm sorry I'm rambling on, I, I would tell you, I'm sure Eric and, and the chairman can, and Andy can acknowledge, we're very upset about this. It's just a last-minute problem that we're trying to deal with.
Kelly, can you, can you, um, let the board know, uh, give the board an update on the county's plans for fencing along the rail trail?
So there's no fencing along the rail trail. Um, they are, um, I'm just, so there is no fencing that they're proposing along the rail trail. Marist has indicated to us, we've discussed with them what their plans are, and we've been advised that they're going to put up their own fence, um, along the rail trail to control access and so forth, but the county is not putting up any fencing.
I'm, I'm sure they must have some kind of railings or whatever on the bridge portion going up, so people aren't falling down that steep slope.
Yes, that's our understanding. I mean, the other problem is, not, not to kind of make all my problems your problems, is that they intend to plow this urban trail, which is unlike the other rail trail systems. And, uh, so we're also working with them to try to understand how, if they plow that, that snow and, you know, stormwater discharge and so forth, isn't going to affect our site, because again, there's only like, seven feet between the end of the rail trail and our property line, where you have this huge slope.
Eric, 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 help me out, uh, I'm just a, a volunteer here. I, I don't have any expertise in this, in this field. So is it possible, if the applicant came up with a concept, some type of concept for the landscaping on the west side, uh, for our approval? And then if they had to be tweaked for some reason in the future, you know, if you needed to make a field change?
Field change, right.
Uh, could we do something like that, if they were to come back and say 30 days, which would be prior to their August 1 deadline? At least we'd have some idea.
I, I think what Kelly's saying is that, is that she's not going to know before, before she's gonna wanna CO before they know what they can, what they can plan there.
Rail trails...
That they're, they're not gonna know what the rail trail is doing and what they wanna screen before they need a CO.
They're probably not gonna have bridges until next year.
If, if that's the case, I mean, the only other alternative I can think of is, is one that we did with, um, might be a variation of what we did with Mazda, um, where there could be, uh, a, a plan notes or an agreement to do something, provide something satisfactory to the board, um, within a certain time period. Uh, that would serve, that would serve as a site plan, a continuation of the site plan authority beyond the final CO.
The only other thing that we've done...
Tie that time period to completion of the rail trail, kind of, like, this, right?
What about the steel wall, the new one, four-foot-high steel wall, it's thin, yeah?
Well, again, I, I don't think we wanna spend time right now, kind of, designing, figuring out what the, the solution should be, because it's, I, I, it's impossible to do that now. I think we just wanna figure out procedurally, how do we say, move forward and let them be, because they obviously have a problem and they need their CO.
Yeah, and I, and actually, and I have, I have confidence that if they came, came up with, with an idea, that they would, it would be realized at some future date.
You were just gonna say something?
Yeah, one thing that we have done in the past is we have conditioned, um, some final closeout type things on closeout of the, of the speedies permit. Um, that may be something to consider as well.
It's not a bad idea, given the stormwater, is it? Something that's...
Potentially issue CO.
Doesn't that have to be closed out part of here?
Not for CO, not necessarily for CO.
That's a good idea. Kelly, what do you think?
That is...
Well, I, I think, I agree that we, we're talking, what we're asking for is that the planning board approve this plan. That's what we're asking for, and so we have extensive landscaping around all sides of the building. And again, the whole purpose of landscaping is to screen the building and to, you know, for the benefit of the residents. But there's zero reason at this point to put landscaping on the west side, because we have literally a wall from that...
Kelly, I think, I think you misunderstood, I think we agree with that, right?
Oh, okay.
It would be grass, is what it would say now, but we would have a note or some other mechanism, perhaps, as Andy suggested, keeping the SWIP open, that would just, you know, so that when, when the, sometime between now, with now and when the trail is complete, you, you come back and show us what you planned, what the resolution is gonna be on that side.
Okay.
It doesn't hold up your CO, it doesn't, yeah.
But what I'm, what I guess I'm wondering is, why should we come, why would we come back to add landscaping? Why have a condition? If we decide that we wanna come back and add landscaping, then we would certainly come back to the planning board and add the landscaping, but why condition anything, um, on us coming back? So this is what we wanna propose at this point, is grass. Um, I just wanna avoid the fact of having some condition that we have to come back and present a plan to you. What if I come back in a year and I say, well, we don't wanna change it, we just wanna leave it as grass?
I think every, every discussion we've had, with every property that's, uh, that abuts the rail trail, we've had discussion about landscaping, or some type of buffer between the building and the rail trail. Not asking that you provide it before, uh, August 1st, but we want, I think, to have some assurance that at some future date, you know, we will look at, at, at some provision for some type of buffer between that, your building and the rail trail.
And that's, although I think that, I understand why you're asking that. This is such a unique situation, that the rail trail should be buffering for us. There's a wall, literally a wall, a third...
I'd have to plant 30-foot tree.
Kelly, it may be that you come, whenever this time period is close to expiring, it may be that you come back and there's a real justification for keeping it as grass. But I think at this point, the planning board sounds like they are unwilling to let it be grass permanently, without any opportunity to require some revisiting of the issue. And it may be, you know, when the issue's revisited, you make your case and it stays grass. But it, it sounds like what I'm hearing from the board is they want some requirement of, you know, something. And it seems like what I've heard is options, that Andy's speedies permit is probably the best trigger date, because you're not gonna be able to resolve your stormwater until you know what they're doing with the rail trail also, so...
Stormwater's another part of it.
You'll have your CO when you need it, and then, you know, that is just, uh, fairly simple stuff. I think that makes a lot of sense.
Anyone else, uh, comments?
I would just offer up that if it comes back to us, and it is in fact essentially an earthen wall that gets put in front of this property, I would agree with the applicant that landscaping at that point seems to be obvious.
Yeah, but at least we'll know.
Right, I agree, I agree, but just so the applicant is, is aware, I mean, I, I would agree with you that if that is back, if it ends up being grass, it's a practical outcome.
I mean, you know how to make things look nice.
Thank you.
I think the main screen you're gonna need is curtains and the windows, if you build it.
I agree, yeah. Yeah, and dust, you know, we're worried about the dust and the dirt and then everything on the windows, but yes.
I mean, it's, obviously, you can't plant anything there now with all the construction that's gonna happen with the, the rail trail and such.
Right, right, okay, all right, very well.
I was gonna ask also, the focus of all of the discussion has been on the rail trail, but there are some substantial landscaping changes around the, the rest of the building as well, including, I think, um, some new fencing around the building, and so I think it's probably fine, but...
Didn't, didn't you say that you're not doing the fences?
Not doing the fencing.
Yeah, we took up all the fencing, yep.
Okay, okay.
So the only thing I think the board should discuss before you potentially move on is the sidewalk. Is there, I don't see any issue with moving the sidewalk, but I know that the board's really disgusted.
Sidewalk is fine.
Yeah, sidewalk is fine.
The east end sidewalk, I think that's a quicker route for the people, for the residents, to get to Fulton, than the, than going around the longer L shape of the building, so I don't think we'll miss it there. And it doesn't look like it, it would be stairs in order to connect there, but there's also a, also the, I don't know if you mentioned it, but the rail trail's putting a big whole staircase in that corner as well.
We, we lost, uh, we can't hear you.
Oh, ah, no, it's on. Rail trail's putting a big staircase in that corner as well.
I can hear you, Kelly, but I can't hear them.
Yeah, I can't hear anyone.
Wow, that's weird.
Now the video went.
Now the video, oh, internet connection issue?
Uh, Ken, did you lose video?
We have our...
Ken, you guys hear us now?
Anyone else on the call?
I have video from the board, I'm gonna raise the hand there.
Yeah, yeah, we see your hand.
Mics are working at the town hall.
Uh, Sabrina or Mike Ritchie, do you hear us?
Are you, you guys are logged in, can you? Oh, Andy, can you?
Audio is out.
I'm, I'm not connected to audio.
Okay, I lost video also.
Cal, now, are you, Cal, now?
Now I lost the boardroom, yeah.
Okay. Wait. Or how they got lost.
That's interesting, 'cause we have you all here.
Oh, there's the boardroom.
Do you wanna, oh, because he is. What was that? They, Ken just said, there's the boardroom.
We still can't hear.
You see the boardroom, but you don't.
Yeah, they should be, even moving the camera.
He's going down, I see Kristen leaving.
Can you guys hear us?
Yes, yes.
Okay, we cannot hear you, we, now we can see you, but we can't hear you. So if you want to move on, if you have any other questions for me, I won't be able to answer, because I can't hear you, but if you want to, uh, act and so forth, I will mute my computer.
So what kind of a motion do we, do we need here?
Well, it's, it's a discussion.
First, first of all, discuss, yeah.
There's no motion.
No motion, it's just...
Yeah, I think it's just a discussion, guidance, so we can, uh, come back to you, Kelly or we could come back to you with some kind of a proposal of what, before they need a TCO, before they need a final CO.
So the next one, I guess.
Well, I don't, isn't, I would think that they don't need to come back, because we will just condition the, um, they can get their CO, but a condition will be added in as part of that, that they come back before, prior to their speedies permit.
Right, right.
So, um, they don't need to do anything with us prior to getting their COs in August.
Yeah, but we, so we need to do something for, we don't need, in the next meeting.
Well, this is a, this is a discussion about potential field changes, but the staff felt it was significant enough that the board should, um...
We still can't hear.
Mike, you didn't accidentally mute them, us, did you?
I, I didn't, no.
Carol, are you still there and can hear us?
She doesn't, I don't think so, 'cause I've asked the others on the call too, to, to say something, so they probably don't hear us. I could, I don't know, getting off the Zoom and getting back on would be a smart thing to do at this point.
It was saying it will mess up the recording, but...
Yeah.
Right, 'cause the recording will only continue.
No, we're near the...
We could have somebody, why don't you log in with your phones and just set it for audio only? So that you...
My phone has almost no battery. I'd, I'd love to do that, but, uh...
Probably wouldn't be able to hear very well, anyway.
Yeah, I don't...
You'll only be able to hear the person right in front of the phone.
Well, is, is the meeting become invalid if we don't have Zoom? I mean, people have the option of being in person.
So I guess I have the question, is the audio, we're still recording, and what's being recorded? So I guess I have the question, is the audio, we're still recording, and what's being recorded is including what we're saying in this room?
Right now, we are still recording. I can see the recording button on the screen. It's, as far as I know, I don't, I don't know what the Zoom is doing.
Do we know anything about the live broadcast? I mean, Mike, you may be able to message, you know, ask either Ken or Kelly to log out and log back in and see if it makes a difference.
It's interesting, I can see the chat, but I can't type anything into it, or maybe I can. Let's see.
I just logged off, or I could do it.
Log off and log.
I'm gonna message Kelly while we're-
Again, I just, I just sent it to the- Carol Hap said that, uh-
Can you log off and log in again?
She cannot hear the board, audio, but she can hear Kelly and Ken.
Right.
So that would be, Zoom would be okay, but we would not be okay. So they can talk to each other, but they can't hear us.
So I think they're, I think they're logging out.
Okay.
And log, and then they-
Carol Hap says we have no sound coming from the board. Yeah, it's the same from her.
Which doesn't necessarily-
It's not just them.
I guess it's a Zoom issue.
But they hear the Zoom through the cable. He hears us in the-
You can hear both of us fine.
In the back. Oh, yeah, I, I picked it up, but, um-
Well, let's see, when they, when they log back in, which will be, hopefully, here's Kelly now. And there's Ken. I don't know if it's gonna be any different.
You know what, and then what was sent for the Zoom?
Yeah, it was sent on May-
Kelly says still can't hear.
Still can't hear?
Right.
Okay, uh, then I think maybe I'll log out and try to log back in.
Yeah, and then we'll have just two recordings.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right.
That's all we have to do.
All right, so that's what I'll do.
Unless I, unless I log into the Zoom.
You want to message him first?
No, let me-
You want to message again?
You want me to message him first? All right, yeah, that's a good idea, probably. I'm sorry.
For all of the applicants.
Yeah, that's what I, I have been doing that.
We just got an email from Sabrina, Kristen just did, so if you want to respond to her.
I have no internet in here, so I don't know if it's the building or where it is.
Yeah, go ahead, yeah.
I'll try and respond to that email. This is all fun.
Well, this is not how I expected the-
Can you hear me?
Yes.
We hear you, just fine.
We hear you, Ken, but you can't hear us.
Yeah, we still can't hear you.
All right, so I just sent a text.
Hey, Ken, I think, this is Carol, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I think they can hear us, but we cannot hear them. They're, they're logging off right now and trying to get on.
Yeah, rebooting.
So it's the board audio out, which is a problem.
Okay, I'm back.
We all tried, Kelly, they're gonna reboot.
They're gonna reboot.
All right.
Wow.
Okay.
It's a new adventure every day.
This is the equivalent of, you're on mute.
Yes, it is.
Yeah.
It is 7:33. Oh, I'm connected to you. Looks like my line is working.
Recording in progress.
So now we have no one else, though, they all have to log-
They have to log back in, I see. They are doing that, so that's good, okay.
All right, bye.
We can hear you now.
Hey, that's the oldest trick in the book, right? Log off and log back on.
But I lost thousands, reboot.
If I'm ever on life support, I want you guys to try that. Plug it, plug it back in, see if it works.
That's recorded, so we now have that officially.
There you go.
I was starting to look up sign language.
All right, so-
A quick question here, shouldn't, shouldn't we vote on an amendment to the plan, you know, that we did?
I was gonna make it maybe, I was thinking maybe a motion to, you know, to accept the field change and just acknowledge that, that the staff can grant the C O, that we're leaving the SWIP open, and they'll come back, you know, just, just leave it like that, so it's, we've, on the record, we've all agreed to that process, and then we're fine. We're not changing the plan per se, right?
Do you want to, do you want to put a timeframe on how long, you want to put a year?
Well, I mean, why don't we go with when the tra, the trail's complete? I mean, by the, by the time the trail's complete, long before that, I think we'll have a pretty good idea of what-
And I don't know what the timeframe is for construction, but that could be, could be two years.
But I don't think it's gonna be much more than that. I mean, they're starting now.
I mean, they're pushing ahead with it, I know.
And there's probably not much point in finalizing things until it's complete, because if they're going as a design bill-
And no sense in making Kelly come back.
Let's have something in writing anyway, that we, so we know-
You mean in the record, is what you're saying?
In the record.
Yes, in the record, yes.
So you-
Um, in recording.
Yeah, in recording, so we're gonna basically, if the board agrees, we would, you're authorizing staff to accept the field change.
Changes, because-
Changes as presented, and, and to go ahead and issue the C O, and when the time comes that they're ready, otherwise ready for the C O. All the other things have been done on the plan the way they're supposed to be. And then we would leave the SWIP-
Adding a further condition.
Yeah, the only thing that concerns me is tracking it, but I mean, we'll have to figure that out internally.
What's that?
Keeping track of it, remembering.
Oh, remembering it. Well, I think we can do that for this one.
Figure that out, yeah.
Yeah, and leaving the SWIP open, and that they will come back with a, to talk about the landscaping when, sometime before the trail is done.
Sounds fine. So moved.
All right, very eloquent.
Doug, you gonna second?
Anybody second it?
Second it?
Yeah.
Second it?
All right, moved and seconded, called the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed, it's six to zero.
Thank you.
See if you could transcribe that motion initially.
Have a good night.
Thank you. If anyone wants a tour of the building, you know, the fourth and fifth floor, just give me a, give me a yell, and I'm happy to walk anyone through.
I mean, the one other thing we didn't discuss is, yeah, what, eventually you're not sure what's gonna happen along your whole border of the rail trail, right? And if they, if you wind up with a fence also, we want to talk about access gate, you might consider that, that kind of thing.
Yeah, I think we're against, we're not putting a fence up, we're not proposing any fence. I mean, I don't think that it's in the radar. If, if there are significant issues that we have, then we would come back before the planning board and propose a fence, but at this point, we're not proposing any fencing.
Okay, great.
All right, thank you, everyone.
Kelly, I would just also suggest the board to acknowledge the designated open space aspect of it, that, that you're okay with that.
We're okay with things, yeah, we've already done, yeah.
Yeah, since you're not putting up the fence around the building, it's, you know, just landscaping and sort of kind of open, open space.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Have a nice night.
Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, that's actually the last agenda item that technically involves me, unless you feel that you need me to stick around for the other discussions of the code amendments?
I don't know if we are any, probably not.
I like that answer.
Maybe they-
Thank you. Have a good evening, everyone. Good night.
Good night.
Night.
Good night. Next up is store space architectural discussion. Who's on?
Good evening.
Thanks for hanging in there on that.
No problem. Mike Ritchie from Castiglione, also with me is Sabrina Pernalat from Star Space, and Gretchen, Gretchen Alton, the project architect. So just a brief, I guess, summary of where we were since last week, and then I'll let Gretchen run with the architecture. The last meeting we had back in April, there were some concerns about the architecture, which I was delighted to listen to, and thank you very much for taking the time to put us on the agenda for this. We went to the zoning board, I believe it was, last Monday, and they granted variances for parking. We're set back and, I guess it's front setback adjacent to residential district. So we've obtained those variances. I believe plan wise, I think we're pretty current. So they actually did, for the parking variance, allows to reduce it even further, to reduce it down to a minimum of 10 spaces. We're still working through that right now, and I think that the smartest thing for us would maybe show similar spacing that we had shown on previous plans, maybe as banked parking, so don't pave them now, but design a way that if there wasn't any in the future, they could build them. So we understand that we need to submit, I think by Monday to get on for the June agenda. So that really is the only significant plan change. We have continued to coordinate with Cal, the Department, the Health Department, and the D N T. We're going to be closer to getting it online to be willing to sign, sign the plans or grant their approvals.
All right.
So with that, I'll share my screen.
Yeah, that sounds good, if you don't need the parking to lay and bake it, so.
Should we test them something before? Sorry, I'm on my voice computer. Is mine not working right now? Desktop share.
We just went through our own technical difficulties here. As you probably noticed.
Mike, if you need me to share my screen, I can do that. I came down to my computer.
Okay, yeah, well, Gretchen, I know, are you able to share?
Yeah, I'm ready.
The elevations, yeah, they're, you sent them to me, so I'll, I'll-
Yeah.
Give it to you, give it to you, Gretchen, you're, you're showing them.
Good guy.
All right. Uh, okay, so we did make some changes to the front of the building, like we talked about, I think in our last meeting. We've added some sloped roof lines along that front north facade. The other three facades remain the same, but we did run sort of an average building height also on the perimeter of the building, just to see where we were, and we're at 40.86 feet, so, um, does that mean that we need a variance for points eight six feet?
Uh, probably, yeah. By the letter of the law.
And of course, Lisa just-
By the letter of law, probably, is the answer.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, Mike, I'm assuming you'll handle some of that.
Yeah, and I think the discussion previously was that we could go back to the zoning board and then potentially the planning board, assuming we check everything else off the list, the planning board could approve at June's meeting with the condition that we, we get the variance from the zoning board at the next meeting.
Yeah.
Got it.
We could do that.
Does that seem reasonable?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, wonderful. So our front facade rendering was modified, and we did provide a rear rendering, that was a request at the last meeting. Now, this is a little artistic. There's a enormous existing tree line that runs at the top of this hill that we did not choose to render, just because it would block the entire building. This hill, I think is, frankly, if I'm wrong here, Mike, I think is about 20 feet tall.
Right.
So that is why these people on the job look so small, because where the angle of the camera is up so high that it makes them a little small. But that is pretty realistic, at least as far as the plating is concerned. The plants that you see here are what Mike is showing on his landscape plan now. And like I said, the only thing that we're not showing is that tree, heavy tree line that's between the rail and our facility.
Yeah, there's existing deciduous, I think, house table, existing tree.
Yes, mhm, there's an existing tree line there that we did not include. And then this is the new rendering from the alternate direction.
Great, yeah, that, that was helpful to see those renderings.
So we'd be happy to answer any questions you have, and I'll, you know, it's, I'm, I'm changing, hopefully it's what you were looking for.
This has probably been asked and answered before, but do you have roof mounted units on that building?
Yes, we do.
And they were all screened by the-
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, the parapet in the front of the building, so at the high side of the roof, is four feet tall, and then it slopes down from there, so the back gets much higher.
This design, you know, considering the, the length of the building, this, this design is a major improvement over what had originally been proposed, so. Yeah, we appreciate you going back and taking a look at some changes to, to kind of break up that long facade.
Of course.
Anybody else's for discussion tonight?
Just agree wholeheartedly. It looks much better with these improvements, and the rendering is very helpful to conceptualize it, so thank you.
So I think-
Thank you.
I think we're good to go then for your next little.
Great, moving forward to-
See you in June, then.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, thanks, and have a good night. Next up is a time extension for, for Springside, G P three development apartment building. Know they've been negotiating with the D O T and such, getting all their stuff ready. So I moved it to planning board, granted 12 month time extension of additional amended site plan and special use permit approval from July 15th, 2022, forward to July 15th, 2023.
Second.
Moved and seconded, called the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed? Motion passes, six to zero. Next up, we got a couple zoning text amendments to fill over the evening, so we'll have Mike-
Yeah, so-
Take the lead on that.
The first one, so just briefly, the, you know, the town adopted a new conference of plan update in October of last year. We've started working on some code updates, both zoning and to other sections of the code. As part of that, we're focused, the, the code update committee, which Carl is part of, along with Jeff Renahan and Paul Leahy, they, we decided we're starting with emerging land uses or hot button issues, things that we've known, we-
Our code doesn't address that we need to address.
Some of those are, you know, a little bit bigger and maybe a little bit more important than these two particularly, but things like short term rentals, wireless technology, so forth. But the town board did have these two items as items that they wanted to get done sooner rather than later, so we did prepare them. So the first one is a zoning amendment related to tattoo parlors. Basically, back in around 2014, tattoo parlors were written out of our zoning code. And for whatever reason, you know, the, today, that, the current board doesn't really think that's necessary, and would like to, oh, there's music, I can't really see. They would like to add them back in, and so they would be permitted in the A T C district and in the business highway district. In the business highway district, the, the board asked that it be by special use permit, and the A T C would be permitted as of right. We also made a change just to specify in the home occupation section of the code that tattoo parlors would not be considered home occupations anymore. And so we're just looking for a recommendation from, from the board to the town board.
Okay. Discussion, anybody have concern? I was thinking, you know, tattoo parlor, what if we amended epidermal enhancement studio? Instead of tattoo parlor.
I'll, I'll bring that back to the town boards.
What do you think? I'll get a little more broad.
Yeah.
Any other comments?
No objections.
No, they seem to be popular these days, so. I moved that we convey a positive recommendation to the town regarding the adoption of the proposed zoning text amendment.
Second.
Moved and seconded, called the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion passes, six to zero.
Okay, and the second one is related to outdoor music, not, not, not everywhere, but outdoor music that is associated with restaurant, outdoor restaurant dining facilities. So in our code, we, you know, we have, there's an approval process for outdoor restaurant dining facilities. This would apply to such locations that have, you know, an approved plan. It would be a process that would go through the town board. It's actually a separate chapter of the, of the code that we're creating, it's not in zoning. And basically, it, the, the town board could authorize a permit on an annual basis for outdoor music at those locations, and it would be, it would apply to- And it would be, it would apply to the highway business district and the Arlington Town Center district. In the highway business, it can be any kind of outdoor music, and in Arlington Town Center, it would be restricted to acoustic. Town board is holding a public hearing on this on June first, and the weekend, we're looking for a recommendation on, on that.
I just had a question, you were talking about the suggested edits, would that change it to hundred feet, for example?
Oh, yeah, so the, there were a few edits, the, the change actually to the hundred feet is, is necessary to be, for that paragraph to be logically consistent. So, so it was, there were some, a few changes that were done at the last minute before the town board advanced this, and then we went back as, with our committee, and just made some edits, just to make the writing a little bit more consistent, clean it up, but they're not, they're not substantive. They really are just code writing clarifications.
I have a concern. In the ATC district, only acoustic outdoor music shall be permitted.
Yep.
According to Webster, acoustic is of relating to or being a musical instrument whose sound is not electronically modified. Now, under acoustic, drums would be included, or could be, wind instruments like, when, when is it acoustic, but say a trumpet? I'm talking about noise generation. I mean, do we want it to split out, say, instead of just only acoustic? Including but not limited to.
I can see like.
Uh, drums. I mean, a drum could be very disturbing, I mean, at any time of day. I mean, we're talking, I think, here in acoustic, I have a Martin D eighteen. Okay, it's a dreadnought. It produces a lot of sound.
Yes.
But it's not like a set of drums.
Do you want to maybe raise that as a question back to the town board?
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, let them, I mean, rather than.
I mean, if you're gonna use the word acoustic, let's, let's be careful.
Make sure they clarify, make sure the town board clarifies.
Yeah, because.
What I've seen for acoustic, you know, like a little group on the sidewalk is set up, and as far as drum, it's just like a box you sit on.
Yeah, sure, that's. But a set of drums with cymbals, that's a totally different.
Is a totally different thing.
Yeah.
So.
And I mean, even at, like, five o'clock in the afternoon, hearing somebody pounding on a set of drums, you know, it could be pretty disturbing, and you would have no recourse.
All depends on the type of music too, I suppose.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
I'm saying, look before you leave.
Right, yeah, so the recommendation back would be generally fine, that take a look at the definition of acoustic.
For sure.
And think about what that means in terms of things like drums and others that might be too loud.
Okay.
All right. Any other comments from board members? All right, I moved that the planning board convey a positive recommendation to the town board regarding the adoption of the proposed code amendment with the suggested edit shown, and to investigate the definition of acoustic.
The devil is in the details.
Second.
Moved and seconded, called to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six to zero. Any other business the board members want you to bring up?
I move that we end this evening's meeting.
Second.
Moved and seconded, called to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six to zero. Thank you, everybody.